October 6, 2022, Stark County Commission Meeting to Order with, start with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go with the agenda. Does anybody have any ratifications to the agenda?
I.
I'm sorry, Karen has something.
I have one change. The incorrect project number was put on for the recommendation. It should be project number, and it's included with what I handed you guys. BRJ 0045 077, PCN 237 37, not the one that is listed as the recommendation.
Okay, can you repeat that?
Not on the agenda.
Okay, I can look, I can look on that.
Okay, it's in your papers, Carla.
Okay. Okay, with that, Commissioner Zander approved the agenda. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We have the minutes from the September 6, 2022 meeting. Are there any corrections?
I'll make a motion, accept September 6, 2022 minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We also have meeting minutes from September 21, 2022. Are there any corrections?
And will we accept minutes from September 21?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second?
Just one quick comment?
Yes.
Under, no, it would be on one, two, the top of the third page. I don't know. It said, it stated that the HR is confident that we can move all employees to salary. I believe the comment was made, all department heads.
Yes.
I don't know if we need to do that in a correction, but I would.
We can correct it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then I'd change my motion to, with the changes that Commissioner Messer pointed out.
Second. I'll second.
Okay, approved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Accounts payable, does, do anybody have any questions on the bills?
I would move we approve the bills as submitted.
Would you like to include the supplement?
Excuse me, yes, to include the supplement.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I got a question on the department. I'll second it.
Okay, there's a second discussion.
The road department, Allen, equip and purchase for $40,622, what that's for, for Diamond Equipment?
That's the hydraulic equipment for the new trucks we ordered. The trucks are not here yet, but Diamond wanted to get paid for the supplies for the trucks.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? There's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Actually, roll call votes, rest.
That's right, sorry about that. Commissioner Messer will do roll call vote on the bills.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer, I mean Commissioner Zander.
I get two votes this week?
Yeah, you get two. Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh? Chair votes aye, motion carried. We have the Stark, the county agent travel request, Kurt Frelick?
As per your county policy, requesting out-of-state travel requests to take a group of 4H youth. Next week, we're leaving Thursday to the National 4H Meets Judging Contest, which would be held the following Tuesday in Manhattan, Kansas. These young people are going to get to see North Dakota State University, South Dakota State University, Nebraska Beef. It is a processing facility. University of Nebraska and Kansas State with an awards program at the American Royal in Kansas City. So we're leaving on Thursday, a week from today, and return probably 1:00 in the morning the following Thursday.
How many kids are you taking?
We're taking six youth.
And the past groups that you've taken have all done quite well?
Yep. Last year, the group we took, we were sixth in the nation. In 2015, we're fifth in the nation, so we're going to try to get in, in that ballpark again. So all the funding is, for this, is taken care of by the young people. They did some fundraising, so there's, it's just a request to take them and coach them.
There you go. Anyhow, congratulations on your past success and future, so.
Thank you.
I would make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel.
What it, okay, go ahead.
I'll second.
For discussion, what is the amount on that, Kurt?
Budgeted amount is close to $10,000 with hotels. We use state vehicles, paying some mileage there, meals, everything.
And you have that in your budget?
That's, the kids raised the money.
Oh, okay.
The kids raised the money. It's, they did some fundraising, so they've got that money set aside.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. And then you, Kurt, you are in there for the North Dakota State Fair Delegate.
The North Dakota State Fair Delegate, every year to the State Fair, the county agent, the county commission, and the county fair board appoints three delegates to the State Fair on an annual base, on an annual basis to go to the State Fair annual meeting. And those are the voting delegates. This year, we are in Region 9, District 9. Our representative out of District 9 is LeAnn Karski. LeAnn Karski is the, a State Fair Board Director. I believe she is the treasurer of the State Fair Board. So we were just wondering if the county commission would appoint LeAnn Karski. I generally appoint myself and go to the annual meeting so that if there is something to vote on, that we have some representation. Not all the time, everybody does attend from the various counties. There's probably, on an annual basis, Mr. Fran, Commissioner Franchek, you've gone. 60 to 70 total people attend.
I'd say you have a problem with that.
Yeah. So it's not, it's on an annual basis, but they need the appointments by October 15. They send a letter out to county agent, county auditor, county fair boards. They request that so that they can invite those people to their annual meeting. I believe it's November 16, so.
And your recommendation is to reappoint LeAnn Karski?
She, in order, her term is up as a State Fair Director. She needs to be appointed as a voting delegate this year to, to be, to continue on to the State Fair Board. She needs to be reelected as a district person to the State Fair Board.
As per sentry code, I see on here that the county commission gets one, and then you get one, and then the fair board gets one.
That is correct.
So if you're going to do, you know, if you're going to have yourself, and then Dean is on it as a commission, well, then the fair board would also, then that would be up to the fair board to do theirs.
I haven't submitted any paperwork yet, Commissioner Arthod.
Okay.
So we were just wondering, you know, because if I don't, you know, if you appoint somebody else, then I can appoint Mrs. LeAnn Karski.
Well, the fair board appointed Frank last night.
Okay.
Well, I would just make sure that whoever we appoint goes to the meeting. So if it's, whether it's Dean or whoever, let's make sure we have the adequate representation there, you know, that shows up, so. I don't know if you can make an alternative, alternate, you know, point one and have an alternate in case that individual is unable to or does not attend. I don't know if that's an option.
None, generally no, generally no.
So we have to approve your nominee? Is that what we have to do?
No, no, you don't, the county commission appoints one delegate.
That would be Dean.
Of your choice.
Okay.
You know, and they just must need, must be a resident of the county.
In the past, because, because I was on the fair board, you know, I went in that, you know, and then last year, we think we forgot to send somebody on there or appoint somebody in time for the meeting, so.
So do you want to keep, do you want to keep on there? Dean or Bernie, you're on the fair board now, are you interested?
Well, I'll be going there, but I mean, if Dean wants to go, then he can.
It's fine, like I said, it was always, I thought a part is being the fair board, that's the reason that, you know, I attended, it was a pass, but you know, I think the last time we appointed you, but you was too late, already was.
I mean, that's where it was. Well, like you said, I signed up to go last night as a, not a contestant, what do you call it?
A delegate.
A delegate, yep.
So.
I just think that we need to, there, I mean, on the sentry code, I know it says that if we have a fair board, then the fair board can appoint.
We did.
And if, you know, if we have a fair board, then they can appoint the delegates. The only way the fair board can't is, or you can, is if we don't have a fair board.
County commission appoints one, county agent appoint one, county fair boards appoint one. And this is on an annual basis. Every year, we have to go through this with the State Fair. It's just this year with LeAnn Karski, her term expires, and she would like to stay on the State Fair Board. So it's either, if the fair board appointed Frank Klein, it's either the county commission appoints her as a delegate, or I appoint her as a delegate for her to stay on.
So then you, if you appointed her, then you wouldn't go, then?
I just think there's a conflict. I just think that there is a little bit of a conflict with LeAnn from the past, and I just think that I would approve or be all on for you to be on, Kurt, and for Bernie to be on and Frank. That is just my opinion.
I'm unaware of any conflict, so is that something we can be enlightened in, or? I mean, I just want, whoever the delegates are, I want them to show up at the meeting, okay? Whoever that is. And if it's Bernie, I'm fine with that. Dean, I know he would go, that's fine. If it's the commission points Ms. Karski, LeAnn, that's fine, too. I just.
I will make, I will make a motion to appoint LeAnn Karski as the delegate.
I told you about the conflict, it's the biblical.
What's the, no, you didn't.
There's been a motion? Appoint the delegate of LeAnn Karski. Does there a second?
So if somebody seconded that opens up for our discussion, then?
Yes.
Okay, well, I guess I'll second it, then.
Okay, so my question would be if Bernie signed up and wants to be the delegate, I would be fine with that. If either Bernie or Dean are not going, then I would definitely want to pursue Ms. Karski's.
We need three of them anyway, so.
Well, but you're going to have Kurt. He's, he would typically appoint himself, is my understanding. And then you have the board appointed Frank Klein, so this board needs to fill the one seat.
And I don't have to be a delegate. I'll probably go anyway as a visitor, so. Because we each have the three different entities have their, have their abilities to appoint.
There's a motion out there right now.
What's your thoughts, Bernie?
Well, there was, as chair, chairperson Arthod said, there was some issues with, with her when the, fair board was having some changes of, the directors or whatever, and so I was not part of the fair board at that time. I had left the fair board by then, so I'm not quite sure what it all entailed, but I know there was, I might have been some legal stuff going on with the two, I don't remember.
The county fair board?
Yes.
Not the state fair board?
Yes, the county fair board. She's been on the state fair board for many, many years. You know, there, I think she did a good job, I guess. The leadership changed within the county fair board, and there was some issues there.
And her appointment originally was from which body?
That I can add answer, Commissioner Messer. It would have had to have come from one of the three.
Anybody else here remember? Our senior member, Mr. Zander, do you remember?
I just don't understand that you have a person in the community that has spent many years doing a good job, well-respected community member, and has a desire to serve another term. Why we would want to make a change, I don't understand that. And so I'll call for my question.
I don't, well, I'm, I don't know Ms. Karski personally. I just know that there was a forensic audit, and there was a forensic investigation with some of the funds, with the fair board.
Let's talk about that, if you want to bring it up. Whatever happened with that forensic audit and investigation. Were there any charges ever brought?
I just know that there was a forensic audit. I know that there was just some discrepancies with some of the paperwork. I know there was some papers that didn't get delivered or didn't get turned over, some computers where they had to go in and see some stuff. That's all I know. I'm not making any allegations, or that's just what I, not blaming anybody, that's just what I know.
I guess I would repeat my question. Is Bernie or Dean intending, if they would be appointed, would they intend to go to the meeting as our delegate?
Yeah, I'll be there, I'll go as our delegate, but that doesn't, they still need a delegate on Kurt Zander.
Well.
But yeah, as far as the county, yeah, I'll be there.
And if the commission appoints Bernie, then you would appoint?
I have no, no problems making those appointments.
Okay.
We have a motion on the table that needs to be voted on for Ms. Karski. Do roll call vote, Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
No.
Commissioner Messer?
No.
Commissioner Franchek?
No.
Chair votes no. Motion fails.
I'll make a motion that we nominate the delegate as Bernie Marsh.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, well, roll call vote, Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you, commissioners.
Sheriff report, Mr. Eldon?
Morning, Commissioners, Eldon, Mayor, Stark County Sheriff's Office.
Morning. Morning.
Just got the September highlights for the sheriff's office. Total calls for service, 1,380. It's down a little bit from last year, from 1,435. We had 188 traffic stops, that's down a little bit from 230 from last year. 67 of those stops were in the city of Dickinson. 121 of those stops were in the county and neighboring small towns. Excuse me. We had 218 PR stops in September, that's down a little bit from last year as well, from 235. We did five bar checks, again, down a little bit from last year, of seven. Truck regulatory stops, total were 38, five stops. Calls, total calls for service were 38. 12 theft-related calls for service, that's up from seven last year. We had 39, 30, excuse me, 35 canine usages. Our transports, those have been up significantly, I guess. They've been pretty busy with transports. 15 prisoner transports, 13 to court, no juvenile transports, one medical, five mental health, and one for another agency. I just add one thing there, we did have a couple to, outside the state, we had to fly to California to pick up a prisoner. And in fact, yesterday and today, we've got a couple deputies that had to go to Washington to go and pick up a prisoner. We responded to 11 accidents last month, one fatality, two hit-and-run, five injury, and eight property. We had 77 total arrests for the month of September. Other highlights for the month, the Kind Hearts Day that was held out at the county fairgrounds. Huge success partnering up the Stark County Deputies Association, along with the Kind Hearts Project, had a pretty successful day out there. I would guess, we estimated right around probably about 400 people. We had 800 hot dogs that we gave away, so if everybody had two, we were right around 400. But I want to say thanks just to Stark County Rural Fire Department, Marathon Oil Fire Department was out there, Dunn County, North Dakota Highway Patrol, Sheriff's Office, the ambulance services were all there, jumping castles for the kids. It was really a fun event, and it was held just prior to the rodeo, so it was a great lead into the rodeo for the day. Just really a fun event. Our fire calls are up a little bit for the, for the month. Our investigations are up, what I would say primarily our theft and fraud calls. Investigations in our sex crimes have been up. I just mentioned, we did have a theft of some county culverts. Thanks to Al, he helped us in the investigation, we actually located them. Turns out was maybe more so of a misunderstanding as to the culverts, that sort of thing, but we did, we did solve that case. We did have some more county road signs that have been stolen, we're still working on that. We did receive a couple of leads through our tip line after the reward was offered, but we're still following up on those leads, so nothing on the stolen county road signs.
How many more signs have been stolen?
Chad called on Monday, I don't have an exact count, just remembering our conversation. I think there was probably five or six more that had been stolen, so.
You know, and the reward on that, our school resource officer, it's probably a good thing if they probably put posters up or let the schools know, I think we'll be getting some leads there maybe.
Yep, we've already talked to them to keep an eye open. I know Al and I were just talking ahead of the meeting, he's actually talked to Holly, our SRO as well. But yeah, we could definitely do that, get some information posted up at the schools, so. The last item that I have, I don't know if we're going to talk about this now, but if you remember, a couple of meetings ago, we had discussed the siren radio project and the purchase of eight portable radios and 26 mobile or car radios, along with accessories and whatnot. As far as ordering those and getting those, getting those in, our initial discussion, we thought it would take quite some time to get those. We were thinking about 18 months. I'm going to blame Karen, I think she jinxed us. No, I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing. I mean, historically, we've been seeing, you know, it's been a year, year and a half wait. It actually only took three months for us to get those radios in, so they have been delivered. Motorola is looking for payment on that. As I said, it's eight portable radios, 26 mobile radios or car radios, and then there's antennas and programming costs associated with that. The board did approve purchase of those, it's just now that we'd have to go with payment and how we're going to go about payment. So I don't know if you have any other discussion or questions for me on that, but we, we need approval for payment. The total bill on the invoice is $223,898.80.
Yeah, the discussion, as I remember, and I know it's also on our agenda a little later, is because of the information that Jesse presented earlier, was orders of radios, and we'll put it in the 23 budget now. They show up early, so I think that'll be part of our discussion, and we'll get it resolved.
Okay.
We currently have it under the ARPA.
Yeah, I saw it on the agenda, I just wanted to mention, I didn't know if that was, but just from our standpoint, it's hanging out there, yeah, so. Any other questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
County Road, El Heizer.
Well, good morning, everyone. Just going to give you a little rundown with the road crew. We finally finished up salvaging gravel off our road project, 107th and 32nd. All that gravel will go back on as salvaged gravel when the road is regraded. We moved the trucks over to Richertown to do some hauling over there. We're gravelling the Get Part Bridge replacement project, that one is substantially complete. One other thing in there, we need an approval. We had RFP out for that construction project, that project that Karen brought up. We need a motion to approve that. And after RFPs, we reviewed three engineering firms, and Highland was the successful candidate out of that, so we'll need to get that into motion and get the resolution sent over to the DOT. And one thing about that project, it's 100% paid for by federal for construction, build-in, you know, the construction, engineering, design, so.
Will I make a motion that we accept the RFP? For BRJ 0045 077, PCN 23737.
I'll second that.
Okay. Got a motion and a second, we'll do roll call vote on, Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
And what this project does, it consists of, it's removing three old bridges, replacing low-water crossings, so we take them off the bridge inventory, that's why they're approving 100% payment on it. One thing I didn't see, Karen, was the temporary construction easements in the bills that Jeremy sent you last week. Was that, that needs to be taken care of?
Was it part of the bills continued?
I didn't see it in there, but I'll check before you guys close the meeting today to make sure, because that's got to get paid this meeting.
Okay.
So I'll check on that, so. Other than that, I don't really have anything else, unless you have anything for me?
That's the temporary, what else?
Construction easements.
Okay.
Don't you want some out-of-state travel?
Oh, that's right, I forgot about that, out-of-state for going to Rapid City Road Convention here in about two weeks.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, motion for out-of-state travel for Mr. Heizer. Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Marsh? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Karen, that's why I wanted to put an agenda, so I wouldn't forget it.
So if I'm going to do that, do I need to do that also?
No. Commissioners don't need out-of-state.
You're part of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman? Can I interject, just a one-minute deal?
Yeah.
I'd like to introduce Ashley Cuffler from the Dickinson Press.
Hello.
Hi.
She's front row. Ashley, just. She's, uh, front row, Ashley, just stand.
Hello.
Ashley, uh, just joined, rejoined the Dickinson Press and is going to be the county reporter. And, um, this is not her first rodeo. She was with us ten years ago for quite some time, and, and so welcome back and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Interstate Engineering, James Katermis.
Doesn't look like James.
Oh, hi, James, sorry.
I'm in place of Jim, I'm Bob Prosev. Jim's out on a, on a project that had, has a meeting. On the BRZ of forty-five, seventy-five, Thirty-eighth Street Bridge Replacement, I believe Jim submitted a, an item for the agenda. We submitted the draft environmental document to DOT, have not heard back from them yet. We need this approval to submit for the department's bid opening. Bid opening would probably be pushed to two thousand twenty-three of March. It, you know, the, the challenge with this, and you know, Al, getting a precast material is tough right now, and however, if, if we have a later season installation of a box culvert, that's generally a little better, tends to be a little drier. But, uh, I guess with that, are there any questions or comments or?
Mr. Heiser.
Only indication I got, I, what I understand, any project bid after November of twenty-two may not even get built in twenty-three. And it's, it's out of our control, we just gotta set a date and just, just run with it when the, when the dates come available. When we bid it, that's when we'll find out we'll do it.
That's the understanding I have also.
Thank you.
I guess, thank you.
Thank you. Highland Engineering, I had to make sure it was the right person, hi, Mike.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our engineering projects, uh, one on Eighty-third Avenue Southwest, north of Richardson. The environmental document has been reviewed by the DOT, so we're working on that final, uh, draft and the final plans are being prepared. Most likely, the bid letting will be in the spring of twenty-three, same as, uh, Interstate just talked about is due to this bid letting in June. It might not get built till twenty-four, so unfortunately. The BRJ zero zero four five low-water crossings that appreciate the project award on those three low-water crossings, all we're working with Al, coming up with the preliminary engineering scope and fees and get going on that. We have released our subconsultants to do our cultural resource and wetland surveys for this fall, so hopefully they get done with that soon before hard freeze. So we can get those reports and get working on the environmental documents, so. Um, other than that, our construction engineering project is, uh, the one on Eightieth Avenue Southwest, Southeast of Richardson. Again, that was bid in June, uh, just kinda on hold right now. Completion date on that project is October first of twenty-three, so haven't got a, uh, precast box culvert manufacturer date yet, but I'm assuming it'll be this spring, this next spring, and then they can get construction started next summer, so. That's all I have on my report, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Northern Place. Morning, Jeremy.
Morning. Just a few, uh, brief comments on our projects. The Eighty-third and Eighty-sixth Avenue Bridge Projects, south of Richardson, both are open for, uh, traffic, um, as of today. There's still gonna be some erosion controls, some cleanup to do for the next two or three weeks probably, but, um, it is open to traffic. The next project, the paving project, we submitted the last pay estimate, which is included in the bills, um, for roughly twenty-five thousand, but that essentially, uh, clears out that project. Thirty-second, one oh seven, um, they're making fairly good progress. I would think the grading could be done in the next two or three weeks, perhaps, if things go well. Lot of cleanup left on that one, but that one is, is going fairly well. Kind of maybe a broken record with culvert delays and stuff like that. That contractor, like most of them, had problems with, with, uh, delivery dates with culvert, so that got pushed back a little bit, but they're actually doing pretty well with, with the, uh, delivery dates and working around delayed delivery dates, but it's going fairly well. Design project, we have a hundred and thirty-first Avenue, uh, that did get pushed back to a December bid opening date. The DOT in core has not, um, reviewed or approved the envi- environmental document, but we're expecting that very soon. We're still hopeful of twenty-three construction, I think that's, um, certainly possible for, for that project. Last design project we have is Hundred Twenty-seventh Avenue, south of Bellfield, not much to report on that one, still working with a state archaeologist on that project. Miscellaneous, we had, uh, meeting with, uh, DOT representatives on Monday, talked about the funding and future projects. They kinda said the same thing, that we all kinda know that the envi- environmental process takes longer than anyone wants to see. And coming from the DOT, when they say that, that really means it is a problem if, if they think it's delayed, so. See what we can do with that, but kind of out of our control on that one, but, um, it's more important than ever to try to get these projects started sooner. And I think that picture there, unless that's not for me, I believe that's the triple-cell, uh, box culvert that's, uh, down by Trap Gab Harts. That's obviously not finished, but that's the triple-cell box culvert. Any questions on that? Okay, I'll stick around for another portion of the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, up next is the concerns regarding one oh seventh and Thirty-fourth Road Project.
Good morning, I'm Dave Bauer.
Good morning.
I have handouts for you, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So thanks for allowing us to, um, chat a little bit about, uh, the work that's going on in a Hundred and Seventh Avenue Southwest. I'm representing the fourteen people who signed the presentation, basically. There is a signature page on the very back, Tracy and Jackie Hoff, uh, didn't get their signatures until late last night, so, you know, they won't be on there. First of all, shout out to Al and the Road Department, and how well they've always maintained our county road out there, a Hundred and Seventh and Thirty-fourth Streets Southwest. Anytime we've ever had an issue, concern, problem, his team has always, um, really taken good care of us, and, and so we wanna thank him for that. This report that you have is really not a report, it's more of a narrative. So when they started doing the road construction to put in the pavement, um, we saw how the, the hill was being manipulated with the dirt and, and those types of things, and we believe that there's some blind spots there, and I know a few of you have already been out, we met, um, after our concerns, one of our team members, Chad, called and arranged a meeting for Saturday morning at seven o'clock with the engineer, Jeremy, who just spoke, road superintendent, Al, uh, and two commissioners, Neil and Bernie, and there were about eleven of us out there, um, on that morning, which I really appreciate you guys all showing up, uh, including Jeremy and Al. And, uh, anyway, we discussed, uh, kind of visibility issues, which is the big thing, and, um, so at the end of our discussion, uh, they said that they might make some changes, which they did a little bit. But still, the crux of the issue is, um, in that fourth paragraph, the original structure of the road, in line with DOT specs, it actually creates a plateau, a flat top to the road immediately following the intersection. This allows greater stopping distances, but causes issue with visibility and stopping at the edge of the flat top. So in other words, and I'll get to the pictures here in a minute, but, um, if you're at Thirty-fourth or on either side of a Hundred and Seventh, when you look, you only have about a six-hundred-foot visibility window, and at fifty-five miles an hour, that's a very short distance, even though I'm, I think it is within specs of, of stopping, but our concern isn't necessarily the stopping, it's getting up to speed. So, again, a bunch of us met on Saturday the four, uh, first of October, and we did some visibility tests with a rangefinder and speeds and, and that kind of a thing. And so the visibility from Thirty-fourth looking north and south is about twelve hundred total feet, that's about as far as you can see. Six hundred to the north, six hundred to the south, which I believe is the way it has been designed. One of the issues that, um, is a, is a little bit of a concern, it's actually kind of a bigger concern, is that if you're on top of a Hundred and Seventh heading north, you're going down a hill, um, at Thirty-fourth, you start going down a hill, and immediately at the bottom of that hill is, um, one of the driveways that is, uh, it's not even visible until you're like basically on top of it, and that's one of the, uh, the owners here, and I believe he met with, uh, Jeremy and Al just yesterday to talk about that a little bit more, so. Even with, after the meeting and everything, we believe that there's still, still public safety issues with a Hundred and Seventh Avenue Southwest Road Project with respect to visibility of traffic for travelers and residents alike. We believe that the road design needs to be reassessed with these visibility issues in mind, especially with stopping distances to the residents' approach north of Thirty-fourth. The buildup of a Hundred and Seventh and Thirty-fourth intersection with knobs creates what we believe are issues with visibility and stopping distances in the northern approach. The third page is our concerns and thoughts. We, as the residents, feel that shaving the knobs down would in fact alleviate the problem and might be the best solution. Another idea would be maybe a reduced speed zone. That's probably not a realistic thing, when it's paved at fifty-five, nobody's gonna slow down, so. Another thought would be, and not to insult Northern, but, um, could the problem be reviewed either by another engine, engineering firm or Northern offer additional options or suggestions, that would be the thought. Down at the near the bottom here, it says, we wrote up, residents as well as through traffic often consist of heavy loads, trailers, and farm equipment. Stopping distance becomes even more important in this traffic. So someone coming up over the hill on Thirty-fourth and someone going down, or a Hundred and Seventh, and somebody going down the hill on the other side of Thirty-fourth, they're gonna be on top of them before they even realize there's a truck there, so it, it becomes an issue. Let's look at the pictures, photo one is the view from Thirty-fourth Street Southwest looking north. And I apologize, the picture isn't better, um, but anyway, you can count the, the stakes in the ground, one, two, three, you can barely see four. That's about six hundred feet, so it's not a very, it, I mean, it's, it's within specs, I'm sure, but it still doesn't give an adequate amount of visibility. And then photo two, it's the same thing, I'm just trying to highlight the plateau here. Photo two is the Thirty-fourth Street Southwest looking south, again, about six hundred feet visibility. And then what we're hoping to see is the third photo, and this is Thirty-fourth Street Southwest looking directly east. Visibility here is at least three-quarters of a mile. And what we're looking for is, why can't it be like that? Because stopping distance, in my very humble opinion, is relevant, but it's almost irrelevant. If you can see three-quarters of a mile down the road, you have a chance to see something that's coming for about a minute, if they're doing fifty-five, versus six hundred feet, where it's six or seven seconds if they're doing fifty-five. So at the, what we're asking for is, can the commission vote to reassess the design and engineering of the sightlines and visibility of the area of a Hundred and Seventh Avenue Southwest and Thirty-fourth Street Southwest? Any questions? That I probably won't answer or can't answer.
Mr. Heiser, um, with the DOT and, you know, with everything and all the specs that you had, can it be relooked at, or how does that work?
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have our engineer come up and answer these questions, because, you know, we hired engineer to do work for us, and, um, I wanna be out of line saying something, so he's the professional at it, we take his word, that's what we pay him to do, so we'll let Jeremy kinda take over this conversation. I'd sure be glad to jump in if you need me.
Okay.
Cool.
You can stay there too, I mean, just stay, so you have, you know, feedback, Jeremy?
You guys haven't had any other engineers look at it or anything, have you?
No, sir, we have not. So, I think maybe the question is, um, I think you were saying you see about six hundred feet of sight distance? Correct. That's, that's the standard. So, I mean, that's, that's the DOT standard, um, not that it couldn't be more than that, but that's, that's, we've generally designed the standard. I got a few slides I can show you, because it's not just a matter of shaving a knob off and, and making it better. What you're gonna do is, is, um, change the sight distance on one oh seventh if you start altering the vertical curve. There is not a flat spot or plateau at that intersection, it is one big, long, sweeping vertical curve in there, so. You're gonna have unintended consequences if you start kinda manipulating the, the profile a little bit. I can sort of illustrate that if you want, but, um, actually, if they're over here. I do got a PowerPoint presentation if you really wanna get into this, but.
Does Mike have it?
I believe so, there we go.
Okay.
I'll hand, if that's okay, I'll hand out these first and then we'll.
We can share, if you wanna share it, Neil?
Yeah.
If you wanna give them to, Bernie and Ken can share.
So we didn't spend a whole lot of time, uh, putting this presentation together, but I, I think it's sort of relevant to, to talk about the numbers that go into it a little bit. So, just wanted to start with some of the design parameters that, that we used. First thing is, we use the DOT standards and use the design speed of fifty-five miles an hour, that's fairly, fairly standard, fairly straightforward. If there's any federal money or state money involved in it, that would be the same standards. It's not standards that we created, it's, it's just adopted by, by the DOT. So that's kinda how we set this project up.
Jeremy, may I?
I think.
I think you got the same page.
I think we have three of the same page between D and I, so we could certainly pass one of these down.
You each need to have three, three, essentially.
This whole thing is one.
Yes, that should be distributed to ten different people.
Got it.
That's what's going on.
That one?
All right.
Sorry for the confusion, but.
That's okay.
So this is all the same.
Yeah, there, and they all look very similar to even complicated even more.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll get to those exhibits later.
There's three of them, where's the third one?
You got the third one?
So getting back to the, the meeting we had onsite a couple weeks ago, the, the kind of complaints or concerns we heard really boil down to three or four different standards. And I'll briefly talk about all of these, but stopping sight distance, intersection sight distance, the forest slope ratio, and then Thirty-fourth Street, or in this case, the minor road landing and grade, and I'll try to, try to address those real, real quickly on all of them. So the stopping sight distance, if you go to the. So the stopping sight distance, if you go to the next slide, there's just a little graphic there. All the, the stopping sight distances, if you're a vehicle trying to crest the curve, you see an object in front of you, whether that's a deer or another vehicle, whatever happens to be. So stopping sight distance, there's a standard to that. In this case, based on the fifty-five mile an hour design speed, it's four hundred ninety-five feet, and that'll, that'll show up later. Intersection sight distance, which I think is really the, the, their main concern, there's a few different scenarios when it comes to intersection sight distance. The worst case scenario is if you're on Thirty-Fourth Street, for instance, and wanna make a left turn. So you're crossing one lane of, of travel, merging, essentially getting on the road, merging onto another. That's the worst case scenario. That requirement is six hundred and ten feet. We, we met that. I think they would even acknowledge that it's, it's, it's at that six hundred foot mark. Uh, the four slope ratio, just in layman's terms, that's just the, the slope from the, from the shoulder down, down to the ditch. That was a concern. We have it as a four to one, that's, that's the standard. Some areas are flatter, but generally we, we met the standard or is, or flatter than that. The Thirty-Fourth Street approach on the east side and the west side, for instance, there's a DOT standard that talks about how flat that should be, how wide, how long that should be. There's a little drawing there that kinda, this comes right from the, from the DOT, kind of the design parameters that go into it. So you put all that together, we put a little table together. Next slide kinda shows, we really did analysis of the pre-construction, the DOT standard and what our design showed. And our design has been verified by us on how it got built, and the concerned residents kinda come up with the same numbers. So this isn't just theoretical design. Stopping sight distance, we've, we've met. I mean, the numbers kinda speak for themselves. Intersection sight distance, I don't know what it was before. It's a little more difficult to analyze that, so I'm gonna have a question mark on that. Our design is at six hundred and ten feet or more. The Thirty-Fourth Street grade, and this is mostly on the east side, okay? Before it was ten to eleven percent, now it's seven. So to me, that's a whole lot better. Maybe not to everybody, but to me, that's a whole lot better. The landing grade, DOT standard is two percent for forty feet. We have it two percent for over sixty feet, so it's flatter than, than what the DOT standard is. What it was before, there really wasn't much of a landing there. I think that was a six or seven or eight percent. Two percent is a whole lot flatter than six or seven or eight, so I think we definitely met that standard. The four slope ratio before was three to one to four, three or four to one. We were at four to one or flatter, so once again, we, we met the standard. One of the comments we, I heard a couple of weeks ago at the meeting was, why is that road so high? Why is that intersection so high? Well, there's a lot of things that go into it when we design it. And I got a list of just a few things. It has to meet the design standard, whether it's ten feet high or ten feet lower, it has to meet the standards, just like we talked about, mostly for sight distance, but also grades of the road. So it has to meet the, the design standard. We also look at utility conflicts. If it was lower, you would have more impacts to the, to the landowners to the west. Cause we lower the road, our cuts would be wider and we're impacting more than what we really need to. Thirty-Fourth Street grades, if that was, if that was lower, you, you would be coming down at a steeper grade if you were on Thirty-Fourth Street westbound onto one hundred and seven. So that's a consideration. The other thing is that, that got brought up is that it costs so much more money to build this road at the, at the elevation we did or we designed it for. Well, we crunched the numbers. I mean, I'm, I'm an engineer, I kinda use numbers to a fault sometimes, but if we were to lower that road five feet, like their suggestion, at, at the intersection, we're generating forty thousand extra yards of dirt cause we're cutting those hills to the west. That costs about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I don't, I don't know what we would gain by spending two hundred thousand dollars. I, I just don't get that. Now, the thing is, if the argument is that by lowering it five feet, we get better sight distance, that's, that's not true. That's not true at all. You'd have exactly the same sight distance. If you essentially spent two hundred thousand dollars, you'd have the same sight distance. And that shows on those, those exhibits that we put together. I don't have them in front of me, but there should be one that looks similar to this. It just has really two arrows on it. And what this is showing, I can maybe... Yes, that one, yeah. So the, and I apologize to the audience, I don't have those on the screen. Actually, that one is. So the red line is how it got designed and built, okay? The green line is if that intersection was lowered five feet. You'd have the same sight distance. You'd have the same intersection sight distance. You'd have more impacts to the landowners. It would cost you two hundred thousand dollars more to do it.
Plus also Thirty-Fourth, wouldn't you have to level that? Two others would be too steep coming into the west, wouldn't you?
Yeah, it, it, Thirty-Fourth Street wouldn't be impacted nearly as much because Thirty-Fourth Street to the west, you're right, Dean, that would be lowered, so that'd be steeper, but it would help on the east side. So that's kinda give and take on Thirty-Fourth Street. But I wanna repeat, the sight distance would be exactly the same. And you could even make the argument by, that having the road where it's at now is gonna give, gonna give you better sight distance fifteen hundred feet away and two thousand feet away. The idea of, of lowering a road to get better sight distance just mathematically does not make sense. I, I don't know how, 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 how that can be argued, but it just doesn't work.
Just a quick question for you. On that same graph that you're using, so we have about, south to north, we crest about sixty feet, and to the north, you decline about fifty feet if, if I read your graph correctly.
Probably, yep.
So what is the distance from the crest to the edge, the left edge of the graph? Is that half mile, quarter mile?
Um, to the very...
I know you've got these...
It would be, it's about fourteen hundred feet, so it's a little over a quarter mile.
Okay.
So in conclusion, we got hired to, to, to design to the standard. I think we did that. There has been, my understanding, there has been some type of, of a review from the DOT. One of the concerned residents, my understanding, talked to the DOT. The assistant district engineer went out there, looked at it, and it wasn't a comprehensive review, I realize that, but no safety issues were, were revealed with that, is my understanding. I haven't seen any written correspondence or anything, but the DOT did review it. Another licensed engineer reviewed it, had no issues with it.
Jeremy, when the project is initially in the planning stage, does the DOT get involved in that from, from the very beginning and along the way to the completion of the project? And does DOT, you know, if there's something that DOT doesn't feel good about, they bring it to your attention?
Yeah.
Tell me how that process works with DOT.
If, if, if there was state or federal funding, yes, the DOT would review our plans, spot check during construction. In this case, there, there's, the county, it was county funded, so there really is no DOT involvement.
Right.
We, we adopt their standards, whether it's federal aid or not, or state aid or not, but the DOT really has no involvement in this project. Now, if, if you wanna continue, I got a couple of other exhibits that show, if we were to, you know, cut those knobs off, that would cause problems too, cause you'd have inadequate sight distance on one oh seventh. And that shows on, shows on those other graphs. Like I said, trying to tinker with a profile, you're gonna have all these unintended consequences that are gonna complicate things for, for the majority of the traffic, which is on one oh seventh. Because if you were to cut those little knobs off or those perceived knobs, you'd, you'd create little, little peaks in the profile. So you'd have to sacrifice the sight distance for one oh seventh.
Do you mind if I pass these extras?
Yep, no, absolutely.
If you have extras, I'll take them. If you have extras, I'll take them.
No, I'm, I'm pretty much done. I'll entertain any questions from the commission or, or residents or, or whoever. I, I'm, I'm proud of our design. It met the standard. That's what we were hired to do. Go ahead. So the first, first question is, you met the standard, totally get that, which is good, but the standard seems like that's the minimum. So my question becomes, can, and I think you even mentioned it right off the get-go, can the sightlines be increased? And if so, by how much?
It, it absolutely can. Really, I think maybe the argument would be, you want a fifty-five mile, mile an hour design speed or eighty?
For eighty, I mean, you see these people.
Well, then convince these people to spend a whole bunch more money. I mean, that's kinda what it comes down to. I'm not trying to be coy or facetious, but that's what it comes down to. How much money do you wanna spend? If you wanna see three thousand feet, we can do it. But do you wanna spend half a million dollars to do that? That, that's their decision, obviously.
What would it take to change it to sixty-five mile an hour? I mean, would that be a substantial increase or...
Well, yeah, yeah, it would be. I, I don't know what the number is, but it's...
I mean, it's a beautiful road, so you know people are gonna speed.
Right. So, so two comments on that. I think we're kidding ourselves if people are gonna drive fifty-five. That's not gonna happen.
Right.
To me, that, that's probably an enforcement issue, if it comes to that, which I think there would be. But if people are gonna drive fast, it tells me there's not a whole lot of sight distance problems, right?
Yes and no. I mean, the sight distance, basically on the whole road, isn't only the one spot where we're at, you know?
Right. Yeah.
If it's designed for fifty-five, it's, 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 it's safe at fifty-five.
Right. We'll also say, and I hope everyone understands this, the sight distance is the same for the whole project.
Right.
It's not, we didn't design everything for eighty and then just this one hill, we made it at fifty-five.
Right.
Is exactly the same.
Where they're worried about, I mean, can that, and that's coming by that turn, if I understand that right?
Intersection.
The intersection.
Yeah.
Can we change the speed by the intersection? I mean, I know that's always a...
Well, we, we changed the speed to the south in front of the, I forget the gentleman that came in front of us, forty-five, and I use that road, you know, a lot to get home. I don't know how much that is followed. I guess the, the question, the thing that I would have is that, when I was contacted, I went out there and I tried to think that if my farming operation was there versus the other one. I think we've kinda taken care of the concerns to the east for that individual who operates his farm, so he can get out with a tractor, trailer and a pup. The, the, the crest of the hill, yeah, visual sight, it meets standard, it's, it's a concern, but I, I still think it's better than what it was because at that, at one point, the natural curve probably slowed everybody down. Now we've eliminated the curve. I sat at that intersection, you know, in an afternoon and just, you know, did what you guys did formerly with a, a watch. And, you know, it's, it, we pay these individuals to do their job, and if we do something arbitrarily without your approval, then you're not signing off on the project.
Right.
There would be risk in doing that.
Yeah, and I, I mentioned that after that meeting.
But now is the time to do any adjustments, corrections, you know, so if there is anything left on the table.
From a technical standpoint, and people probably don't realize that sometimes, the, the best way to fix that is, is to fill on each side. You try to cut it, you're gonna have all kinds of problems where you're gonna, those graphs demonstrate it, you're gonna have more problems with sight distance if you try to cut these, these knobs off, cause there really is not a knob.
You'd have to extend the sight.
Yeah, you'd have, essentially build up each side.
Right.
You know, a thousand to fourteen hundred feet away, which is, you know, now we're, literally we're at an eighty mile an hour design speed, if that's what our, our intention is.
I drove back out there last night, and it, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful road, but, and I understand the, the concerns of the people, but you have a brand new road and it's, it's gonna be beautiful and some adjustments to our lifestyle, I guess, I don't know. It's, it's not your adjustment, it's the people that are driving north and south that need to, but how do you control that?
Well, my, my only thought, just as a resident out there, is can it be designed to, to, to do sixty-five and then be posted at fifty-five?
That was, that was my question too, but what's the dollar amount on that?
Yeah, obviously, I don't know that and whatever, but once the road's done...
It's done.
It's done. You know, there's no, there's no correcting it, so we're, we're trying to make it as safe and as right from our perspective, who, who travel it every day with trailers and the whole thing. And I understand it meets the DOT specs, that's great. However, I'm looking from a, from a long-term use, it's like, let's make those specs not be the minimum, but let's expand on them to, to get to that sixty-five mile an hour where it's considered more safe for sightlines. That would be my thought. And however that plays out between you and Jeremy, the engineering firm, I have no idea. But that's, those are the concerns that we have as residents.
And you know, and that, I mean, if we make it to a sixty-five, even if we could, then you're gonna have people going seventy-five.
That's, yes, that's true.
You know, you're gonna have people going faster than they should be even.
It'll only be posted, I'm sorry, it'll only be posted for fifty-five.
Exactly. Yep, yep.
Jeremy, by the time you put the gravel in and if we pave that on, how much more is that gonna change any of the sight distance on there?
It, it, it'll get better. You know, the Thirty-Fourth Street stoplight or stop sign, where that's gonna come up, is it gonna come up a little bit, about six inches? One oh seventh, is it gonna come up about a foot from where it's at now? So you're getting, you're gonna gain a little bit more. It's not eight hundred feet more, but it might be thirty feet more, fifty feet more.
I don't have anything to add, other than we look at this as not any way, shape or form adversarial, it's more of a partnership, coming together, trying to do what's best. And we understand that if nothing changes, then nothing changes and the road will be as it is, but we wanna express our thoughts prior to pavement and lines going down.
Cause I think we've already changed the plan on it twice, haven't we? Gone in there and moved things around?
What we did do is, like Jeremy said, we added on the south side of hill, I think we probably brought it up...
From the first time that we met with the people.
A foot, foot and a half, and we did some on the other side, but, you know, if we carry that slope out a lot further, Mr. Lowman, his driveway's gonna get really high coming out of there. You know, going to the south is not an issue, cause it's just farm fields and stuff, but going to the north, if we, if we raise that curve and carry it a lot further, he'll have a pretty steep driveway coming out and then it'll affect the next guy, so.
Yeah, cause I mean, we have made an effort to, you know, and I think it has improved a little bit from the first time we've met.
I'm, I'm gonna go out on a limb. I, there's, there's a solution, and, and I know people won't like it. You know, we could just set the speed limit at thirty-five from there to highway ten. You know, we could just set the speed limit at 35 from there to Highway 10. Because you've got a half a mile in between there, but I know, I know people are not going to like it at all. That's another fix, but I know I'll get stones thrown at me, but that's an option. From there to the highway. Because we already got the first half a mile, so it'd be another, a total mile at that speed. That's an option, that's, but the people that drive it won't like it. So, thank you.
Especially if we ever get it paved.
Please state your name.
Okay, Glenn Lowman, I'm the guy on the north side of the hill with the driveway. If you did extend it like Al said, to make it 65 mile an hour both ways, yeah, we're going to have to design and try to figure out a different driveway to come out of my place because the one that I have would be, you couldn't, you wouldn't use it anymore, couldn't use it. And I think what, right now, I didn't do any study on this, but you could have a 45 mile an hour speed zone for that intersection area. And maybe after you cut a couple of them, they'd slow down. So then, in addition to that though, we should maybe consider having a sign for a hidden driveway when you're coming from the south, heading north, because that driveway is hidden.
Especially once the grass grows and the ditches and stuff, it'll be harder to see it.
So, when we were doing the measurements out there, we had, yeah, in grass, but when we were doing the measurements out there, when you could see the headlights of a vehicle in my driveway, you had six seconds of time before that vehicle was on the driveway or, you know, going by, when he was traveling 55 mile an hour. And I think like, I don't know, if I did the math on it, they're at 70 mile an hour, you're like at four seconds. It doesn't give you much time. And so, this is something to consider, is just make sure that there's a sign out there for a hidden driveway. I think that's a necessity, that needs to be put in. And if a person could, I don't know if we can put a speed limit in there for 45 mile an hour, starting 1,000 feet from the intersection on either side of it. But if a person could do that, it doesn't have to be, you know, for a whole mile, it could just be for, you know, that, let's just say, 1,000 feet on either side of 34th. I think that would be something that we needed to consider.
If I can make another comment, I think if a guy's going to change the speed limit to 45, it just will be 45 all the way to Highway 10 because you'd be speed up, speed down. We'd have a bunch of signs out there. I just, if a guy's going to do that, put it 45 to the next 35. It's 10 miles an hour speed differential. It's only a mile.
Right. Yeah, and that makes sense. I wouldn't go as low as 35 because that'd be too big of a speeding ticket, right? If you go 45, I think, yeah, because when you actually do the math on it, how many seconds are you out? 15 mile an hour isn't going to make you or break you on that journey, and chances are it's 45, so, oh, well, I'll just push it up to 50, 55, and they're probably not going to get taken anyway. That's my input on this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heiser, what is your recommendation or what is your opinion on putting a sign up for his driveway and the 45 mile per hour?
My recommendation is, you five board members make that decision. You're the one that has to change the speed limit, I can't do it. So, I'm, I'd like all the residents of Stark County, and if they're going to be mad at somebody, I'd rather have them be mad at you than me.
Well, I think safety's priority one. Navigation is also critical in that regard. Putting up a hidden driveway sign is not very expensive, a whole lot cheaper than cutting that hill down five feet. And I agree, lowering the speed to 45 would work. You get up to Dunn County, ever grow the roads posted at 45? It's not followed.
35.
35 in some cases, okay. Well, where I am, it's posted at 45. But, so I think that's a reasonable solution, and we'll see where it takes us. And if that requires a motion, I would certainly make that motion.
45 all the way to Highway 10?
Well, isn't it 35 across that hill where the Guion gentleman came to us?
It is, it breaks right at the top of that hill. We'd have to change one sign.
So, yes, that would be my motion.
So your motion is for the sign for the driveway, the hidden driveway, and for the 45 mile per hour?
Yes.
Okay. And is that the 1,000 feet before the intersection or the whole road?
On the north side, we would be at 1,000 feet before the intersection and we would go all the way to Highway 10.
Okay. With that, may I get a second on that? Okay? Any discussion?
Yeah, I agree with that there because, like you said, by cutting the hill down there, we don't get, gain any sight distance, and we're spending another 180 or $200,000, and I think this is a better fix than that, but it's not going to fix it totally, but I think it can help. But is your concern of Mr. Bauer, do you think that would work for your group?
Yeah, I think that's totally a reasonable deal, for sure.
Because we understand, I mean, it's got to be safety first, and hopefully this helps that. Okay, we'll do roll call vote. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Yes, thank you.
I'd like to thank your residents for coming in and voicing your concerns, so, like Carla said, safety's all our concern.
Yes, thank you. And thanks, Jeremy, for explaining everything. Thank you. KLG, Andrew Krebs?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to give you an update on a couple of projects. The first one was our wetland monitoring project on 47th Street. So we went out and did the fieldwork this summer, we completed the report and sent it to the Corps in September. It was the fourth year of the monitoring. It's currently at .3 acres, which is .08 acres short of the requirement. So, we sent that report to the Corps, typically they give a response. And in this case, since it's year four, they would more than likely just recommend another year of monitoring. So that's what we're planning to do, is continue monitoring in 2023. Is there any questions on the wetland monitoring? It's kind of an ongoing project. Also, the intersection of Highway 10 and 116th Avenue Southwest, that has been identified as a high crash location by the DOT. So originally Al contacted me wanting to look at some funding for Roundabout in that location. I did talk to the DOT on that, on some different options, and they highly recommended the Highway Safety Improvement Program, submitting an application for that. So that's typically 90% funded for construction and construction engineering. So the applications for that just come out yesterday, so I'll be working with Al to put together an application for funding to install Roundabout at that location.
And you had said 110?
Highway 10 and 116th, so...
Avenue Southwest.
Yep, just south of Exit 56. And then also, we had our federal meeting with the DOT, as Jeremy mentioned, on Monday. Al wants to look at doing a chip seal project on some of the paved roads east of town, like Highway 10. So I was going to get with him on that and look at putting together a project over there. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Okay, thank you.
We have the Southwest Manufacturing Group Resolution. Eric Kittleson?
Eric's changed too.
Good morning.
Jeez!
Yeah, Eric doesn't look nearly as good today.
He might look better.
He had a deep dig into the third string to ask me to come and present today.
Third string?
Yeah, Guy Mos with Baker Boy.
Oh, yes.
Representing manufacturers in the area. Good morning, commissioners, I'm here to ask for your support of Area Manufacturers. The Stark area is home to 20 manufacturers who produce and sell products on the global stage. Together, we employ approximately 1,500 employees and are growing, be it cabinets, aerospace parts, air separators, oil and gas equipment, refined petroleum, or magic ring donuts, which I forgot to bring this morning, I'm sorry. Area manufacturers are creating great products and great career opportunities. This next week, on October 12th, area manufacturers are coming together to host our Annual Manufacturing Day event at the BAC. Hundreds of area students will be visiting and learning about manufacturing career opportunities. These would include welding, marketing, human resources, IT, R&amp;D, engineering, accounting, maintenance tech, and production assistant. I'm here to ask for you to proclaim a resolution proclaiming October 12th, 2022, as Manufacturing Day in Stark County.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Easy stuff we did here.
Yeah, we were way too easy on you this morning.
Hey, thanks for your support, as always.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks to you and your partners and organization for your big commitment to our community and so forth, so.
You're welcome. Glad to do it. Have a great day. Thanks so much for your support.
Thank you, Guy. Best Friends Mentoring. Angie, is that Angie, no?
Morning, yes. I'm Angie Rabbit. Today Caleb Bergard will be joining us, he's our board president for the Western Wellness Foundation.
Okay.
Thank you, good morning, everybody. Angie Rabbit, like she alluded, I'm Caleb Bergard, Board President, served as a mentor for many, many years, now been on the board now for six, going on seven years. Today, in front of you, Angie's handing out a formal request for funding that we have. You guys have been graciously supporting our program for many, many years, we truly appreciate that and your guys' partnership. If you're not familiar with Best Friends, so we service at-risk youth here in Dickinson and surrounding areas, specifically Stark County. We have moved, so we are in a new location, actually just south of here, so, new location. If you do have people inquiring about where we are, we have moved. As far as the attachments you guys received, first one you should have is our 2021 financial disclosure. So with that, pretty straightforward as far as the assets, liabilities, revenue and expenditures. Right now, obviously, as most nonprofit and small businesses, we're still kind of seeing the ill effects as to COVID and moving forward from that, specifically financial. Financially, with creating some more stability, Angie and her team, we've had to make some decisions as far as some budget cuts and being conscientious with our spending these past couple of years, so that's why we would appreciate your guys' continued support through that grant, through Stark County. As far as the other handout, we did give you a program overview as far as our current mentorships that we do have. We do have 72 current matches right now. We actually are very excited, we've expanded into Southheart as of late, so that's a new development which we're excited to see within that school district there. Last handout she gave you would have been some of our group activities and our fundraising events that we do have. Obviously, with being a nonprofit, we look towards the funding that we receive from you guys, but then also we have our own fundraising that we do on our end, so just wanted to give you kind of an idea as to the offerings that we have within the community outside of the day-to-day, school-based and community-based matches that you might be familiar with already. So, as far as other partnerships within the community, obviously, we're integrated within the Dickinson Public Schools, Trinity Catholic Schools, Hope Christian Academy, Domestic Violence, Rape and Crisis Center, and then obviously, as we already alluded to, within Southheart School District, so. Looking ahead, probably our biggest challenges and needs, obviously, why we're here today would be financial stability into next year and beyond. And then obviously, matches, we're always looking for mentors. Right now, we do have 11 children that are waitlisted, specifically male, male is kind of where we're targeting as far as the matches that we do need. So any questions for myself or Angie?
I had one question. The 15,000 ask, that is our normal distribution, like contribution amount that we do, correct? Okay, because that's, that has already been approved for the 2023 contribution, so you guys are good there. I just wanted to make sure that... It's not in addition. That was encompassing everything, okay.
And looking back, Angie and I had a meeting actually earlier this week too, and there were some COVID relief funds that were allocated to us too, so obviously, if there's future discussions or monies that are available, certainly keep our organization in mind too, so. Any other questions for us?
Keep up the good work, yep.
Thank you.
I mean, this is a very good program for the kids, we appreciate everything you do for them.
Yeah, Angie's been with us now and kind of directing leadership for us now for a couple of years, so we're very, very fortunate to have her and our team that we have here and the support from you guys, so thank you.
So how, I know you had said some of the males, but how are you for volunteers, for buddies and...
Yep, so right now, we're at 72 total matches. Right now, we do have 11 children that are waitlisted that have been referred through the schools. So 11 children that are currently waiting for mentors, correct? Yep, I would assume probably eight, eight or nine of which are male.
Yes, eight are male right now, and we just don't have a pool of volunteer, male volunteers to pull from to be able to match those children.
So do you usually go female, female, male, male, on all those, on all the matches?
Yep.
Okay.
So what does a mentor do?
Volunteer about an hour a week and meet with their best friend, either at school or out in the community, and just, it's just an extra source of support or encouragement that a child might not have in their life.
I think Stark County can do better than 72. I think we need to reach out, do some kind of something, and it's on your website and everything too, okay? Well, maybe today will help, and you'll get a bunch of calls.
Have a great day.
Thank you, commissioners. Yep, thank you.
Planning and zoning?
Steve's not available today, he's on vacation, I'll take you there. Only had one item on it, and it was for a public hearing, was requesting for rezoning for Mag Culture Rural Residential in a parcel that was located south of Dickinson, right along Highway 22, near the Speedway turnoff there. And it was approved at that time, and I make a motion that we approve that zoning change, rezoning change.
I'll second it.
Okay, approved and seconded. Roll call vote, Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
We skipped over Mr. Hendrix.
That's moved to next month.
No, it's not. No, he's here.
Oh, Karen, you, okay, Karen told me it was moved.
We received an email that said they were moving to the November agenda.
Dr. Hendrix is here.
Well, that...
Oh, okay.
He's here.
Perfect.
Come on up, come on up. Yes, sorry about that.
Good morning to the commission, and I thank you for including me late on the current agenda. I'm a member of the Slopeberry Rifle and Pistol Club. 13 months ago, several of our club members appeared before your commission. I realized that with our early changeover in officers... I realize that with our early changeover in officers, we just haven't received any follow-up on that particular meeting. We, as an NRA-affiliated organization, would like to hear your thoughts on the matter. We do have a well-organized and well-maintained outdoor range south of Manning, but we do live in North Dakota, and the range really isn't usable for many months of the year, especially November through March, when it's cold and snowing and all the rest of that. We do host a number of law enforcement agencies at our range, and we do provide firearms and safety programs for the general public. There are currently no indoor range facilities, unlike several other population centers in the state. If you may recall, to put it all into context, if we go way, way back in history, there used to be a range in the sub-basement of the community building, and it hosted firearms, particularly pistol and small caliber rifle shooting twice a week. The first person to arrive always made sure the sump pump was working, so we didn't have two inches of water on the floor. We even had a gallery with seating using the old chairs from, if you might remember, the Strand Theater, which used to be downtown. That range, of course, was lost not too, well, a few years ago. Subsequently, the club utilized the range at the National Guard Building, and it was decided elsewhere that they would no longer sponsor that. We're requesting Stark County to possibly authorize and proceed with establishing an indoor range. In addition to our club members, we would be, this could be available to the general prop, public, with proper vetting and supervision. We could assist with the organization and management of such a facility, and we could offer assistance with the provision of a certified range officer and the supervision and safety training by qualified firearms instructors. In addition, such a facility, excuse me, such a facility could be available for scheduled use by law enforcement officers. So all in all, there would be a number of advantages to Stark County and as well the members of the Current Rifle and Pistol Club. So if there's any questions or comments, I'd be happy to attempt to answer.
So this is, oops, go ahead. So this is going to, this is in Dunn County?
No, our current range is in Dunn County.
Okay.
And it's an outdoor range. And that includes the use of high-powered rifles, which would not be appropriate for an indoor range.
Okay, so what is your site, what are you looking at for your site location in Stark County?
Well, one thing that we would consider with proper safety facilities, we'd want to do better than the railroad ties we used in the sub-basement of the community building, and I would suggest perhaps if you have land or space available at the Stark County Fairground.
Because we have that in our, we already have, I didn't know if you realize that, we already have that in our master plan for a fire range, a gun range, in our master plan at the fairgrounds.
Okay, I will communicate that to the club.
If you want to communicate that to the club and have them meet with Lisa Heiser, because she's the one and would be able to inform you and let you know.
Okay.
You know, what the plan is with the master plan and how we want to move forward with that.
How far are we away from that?
Well, it just all depends on funding and raising money and the board and.
I think we're a ways away, because the first building is going to be our event center, and then possibly after that, so it could easily be five years or more.
Dr. Hendrix.
Yes, sir.
What's your, I know the previous gentleman who were here told us, what's the membership in your club again? Do you know, you have that number?
We have about a hundred and twenty-five newspaper members. At the peak of the oil boom, we were up to more than two hundred.
And if you had a good facility, that would probably go up.
That would, that would really help. I would point out that there's federal funding available for such a project, and there's also the availability of funding from the National Rifle Association. I realize that that may be somewhat controversial right now, but it's there.
It's not controversial in Stark County. It's not controversial at all in Stark County.
Okay.
You know, and I think that we could probably, with Bernie saying that, I mean, we probably could push it up. You know, we could do this at the same time.
We probably can't do two fundraisers at once, but I mean.
Well, but there's also an effort on the private side for people running around, there are more than one who are, you know, trying to do this. What I'd like to see is everybody come together and for the best of one.
We're well aware of the, you know, private plans, and to be honest with you, we are not aware of that proceeding anywhere at this point in time, and that's part of why I come to you asking for authorization and moving forward with this project. Some of us aren't getting any younger.
Dr. Hendrix, I think we could really get, maybe get this moving if you would talk with Lisa, you know, and she's right in the back of the room, and be able to communicate with her and the members, and she can show you, you know, part of the master plan.
Was I off on that, on that time period, Lisa, as far as?
Yes, I'll get out of here.
That's okay. Lisa Heiser, County Parks Director, and Dr. Hendrix and I have spoken on the phone about this project, and we don't really know a timeframe until we do the funding aspects of it, so, you know, being off or on, I can't really tell you, but we're going to work as hard as we can, because that is one of the public input pieces that we're going to be talking about when we go forward with our fundraising on this events building and possibly with that. I don't know if I alerted you guys the last time, DSU has now added on the archery programs on there, so that's something that they wish for us to also add into that facility, and we do have a spot on the master plan for that, so the quicker the better, but we all know things take time to plan and do that, but you're a terrific resource, and we will utilize your group and everybody using it to see if we can make it work.
Would you be able to look into the NRA and the?
I have.
Oh, you have?
Yep, and we need, and we need plans and specs in order to.
Yep.
Apply for any of that, and so that's kind of something that's holding our hands, tying us from applying for it, but yes, there are several grants, especially for that.
See, we as a club, higher up, they don't pay any attention to us, but if you reach out as a county resource, they may move a little quicker.
Yes, absolutely, definitely do that.
That's, that's the end of my speech.
Well, thank you.
And we appreciate whatever effort you could make to move forward with this.
Thank you, thank you.
Question?
Um, excuse me, Dr. Ken has a question?
We have a committee appointed here to kind of participate in discussion and planning. I know that committee's not been terribly active over the past year, but I'm, through conversations that I've had with city officials, they're not, their location would be where the Fire Department Training Center is, and I don't know if this is, if our current plans, if we have a committee, I've never received any information on it.
We've discussed when we came back from the meeting with the mayor and the city about this thing, which was a while back, we decided at that point that we'd be better off to go out on our own instead of.
So we're going to have two public-funded ranges now, because, and I just, you know, I'll just voice my feelings on that, is that this should be a partnership with.
I'm doubting that.
Yeah.
I'm not doubting it needs to be a partnership, but it needs to be a partnership.
But it needs to be a little firmer push, and I appreciate what you're saying, but nothing will ever get built if you have a tug-of-war going on.
I don't think we have any tug-of-war, and I think that Bernie, with the partnership, if you're going to have other counties, and like the amount of people you have in yours, I mean, you got to take this one gun range in the city, that's not going to be enough room to get everybody in there and enough time.
And to Ken's reference to the Fire Department Training Facility, we don't really care where it goes, you know, but the Police Department Range and the County Sheriff's Department Range is not available to this club at all. Whatever you can do to help us out.
I think a publicly funded one out at the fairgrounds would just be to where it would be more use of the public, and it wouldn't be so hard to get in.
That's certainly true, and a small caliber range, isn't that much different from a archery range?
No, no, it's not.
They could be parallel to each other.
Yes.
In some way.
Okay.
So once again, I thank you for hearing me out.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioners, if I could just offer just perspective from law enforcement, Mr. Hendrix, Dr. Hendrix did mention, yes, law enforcement has used the range up at Manning. We've also used the Bellfield Range, we have the range facility below the LEC. That one is pretty obsolete, it is still usable to a certain extent. I think where part of the discussion needs to lie, and this is a discussion probably down the road, and just something to keep in mind for everybody involved in a project, is weapons training that law enforcement does is very different than what recreational shooting is, all right? So then, there are different needs there. Is there some similarities in the types of shooting that we do similar to recreational shooting? Absolutely, but when you come to law enforcement and scenario-based training and the types of trainings and weapons use that we use, it's different from public. So that's just a pointed discussion, and the needs would be different, especially if you're going to combine a law enforcement range with a public range.
Yes, okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Zander, or Commissioner Zander, you had mentioned this committee, who's, I guess I didn't realize.
Yeah, I was on it.
Yep.
I remember Cory Lee was on it, I think, but he's not from, I mean, he went to the meeting, I don't know if he was on the committee.
Okay.
I don't remember who else was on it.
Okay. Oh, we can look into that. We are going to go on break. Fifteen minutes.
Owners with $600 each for a temporary construction easement on that for the project on 10732nd Street. Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. We got County Health Insurance, Joetta Piercy. Good morning.
Good morning, Joetta Piercy, Human Resources Director. We have three different proposals that I had given you in your packet. And just a little background on this, our current plan is through Indy PERS. And it is Sanford Health. They only offer a two-tier plan for us. And so that was kind of the basis of why I thought we should do, look into this further. Is I felt that we needed a plan with more options. So in other words, right now, you can only have a single plan or a family plan. And we have many people that, you know, maybe just have a spouse or they have children that they want to put on the plan. It's an annual cost of $1,288,830. And we currently contribute 75% of both the single premium and the family premium. We won't know what the increases are going to be this year. We will get those around June for a July increase. But the marketplace is kind of telling us it's probably going to be a 10 to 15% increase. Is what we may be looking at in July. So as I said, we're looking at the tiers. We're looking at either a three-tier plan. And this would add the level of employee plus children or a four-tier plan would add an additional level of employee plus spouse. So we could individualize plans for people. We also need to consider grandfathered plans versus non-grandfathered. And so right now, we are on a grandfathered plan. Usually it's, you can save a bit of money because our plans were grandfathered in before the ACA requirements. So there are actually some preventative care things that we don't have to cover at 100%. We can assign cost share to those individuals that get preventative care. So what I've learned is basically to control costs of your plans, it's actually better to eliminate barriers to care for people. So the lower you can make deductibles, copays, prescription costs, all of that. Actually controls the costs of your plans. And that's what they're starting to see, you know, through COVID. A lot of people didn't go for care. They felt they couldn't go. And I think that's why we're seeing large increases now. We're seeing the effects of that because people held off on their care. Or, you know, maybe they didn't get the prescription medications they needed. And then the third thing is, we've kind of been discussing in budget meetings is the contributions. And I gave you a handout of the contributions by county. And the, the survey showed that about 74% of the counties pay 100% of the single premium. And, and
They pay almost 100%, you said?
Yeah, yes, mhm. And 50 out of the 53 counties pay 90% or more of the single premium. So we're one of the only counties, I think it's us and Rolette and Logan County, that, that don't pay at this level for a single premium. And then only 15 out of 53 counties, about 27%, pay 100% of the family premium. So the cost share for family premium can range from 38% to 95% for all the rest of the 38 counties. So it's not unusual for counties to pay, you know, more for single than they pay for the family. So the three proposals we're looking at, we have the North Dakota Public Health Insurance Trust or Indy Fit. This is a self-funded plan, a trust. There's many school districts, there are some counties, a lot of counties in this plan. And they offered us a two-tier, non-grandfathered plan. So the tier didn't change at all. And the annual cost of that would be $1,235,861. So we could see a potential savings of $52,000, almost $53,000. Since this is a self-funded plan, they do require an eight and a half percent deposit the first year of participation. Because we have to actually pay for our own claims out of the trust. And so it's a little different than the fully insured plans that I'm going to talk about next. So that would be an additional cost of $105,048. So the net effect is we'd actually be paying more this first year for that one, yes.
Who administrates that program then?
Like the insurance carrier, you mean the, the trust is actually, there is a trust, Brown and Brown Associates?
Okay. And where are they? Do you know where their office is out of?
It's not local.
Is it just a, a North Dakota trust?
This trust is just North Dakota, mhm.
Thank you.
North Dakota Public Health Insurance Trust. They created ju- just to provide a plan for
So if, if that trust runs into financial issues, is there language in there that says that the members have to bring it back to solvency or at a certain level or anything?
Yes, I mean, with a self-funded plan, you take on quite a bit more risk, you know, than, than a regular, mhm. Okay. Then the, the second one I wanted to talk about was the, the Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota quote. They gave us an option of a three-tier non-grandfathered plan or a three-tier grandfathered plan. And so you can say, we see, we can save a little bit more money keeping a non-grandfathered plan. But then again, you don't, you don't get the benefit of providing 100% of preventative services to people. So with a non-grandfathered plan, we could save $39,432. And with a grandfathered plan, we could save $59,472.
Okay.
Yes.
Like, what was the two-tier and what is the three-tier for the
Mhm, mhm. A two-tier is single and family. And the three-tier that Blue Cross Blue Shield could provide would add children. Employee plus children would be that third tier.
So if it's a single person with a child, that's the
Employee plus child.
Was one child or
Any, any number of children, yeah. Okay.
Their greatest savings was looking at the four-tier going to
Yes, so that's the third option I have here, which is Brevera Insurance gave us this quote. And it is, they actually used the Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota Blue Access Plan. Which is the exact same plan that they've mirrored the Sanford Health Plan that we currently have. It's a four-tier non-grandfathered plan, or we could do the grandfathered plan. The annual cost of the non-grandfathered is $1,154,676. With a potential annual savings of $134,154. Or we could stick with the grandfathered plan. Annual cost of $1,136,510 and potential annual savings of $152,320. So with those three proposals that I've just visited about. My recommendation is that we move to a four-tier plan to provide the best cost savings for our employees and ourselves. Move to a non-grandfathered plan to provide the best access to care. And then to change the county contribution to 100% of the single premium and 80% for all other tiers. And this is basically a recruitment and retention issue. And also I learned, you know, you, you actually want those single people on your plan. They help pay, you know, the costs for the other people too, so.
So what's the fourth tier on this one?
This one adds employee plus spouse.
With no children?
No, no, no.
Employee plus spouse with no children?
Correct, mhm, yeah. So if an employee wants their spouse and children, then they have the family plan, yeah. Okay. So the plan that meets or checks all those marks is the Brevera Insurance, Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota Blue Access. Four-tier non-grandfathered plan. It, it would provide our employees with a savings of $124,661. That they would not have to put towards contributions. And it'd actually save us also $9,524. And that's with paying 100% of the single premium and 80% of all the other tiers as, you know, people are enrolled now.
Joetta, quick question for you. Your calculations based on savings and cost, is that based on the current enrollment of the number of employees we have currently, which in the system?
Yes.
So we have what, six, 75, 65, what do we have?
We, we have 75 approximately, mhm.
So if we move to, whether it's a three-tier, four-tier, 100% program, 90, whatever the number is of contribution. Would you expect us to get additional employees to enroll in the program?
I would hope we would get the 20 or so that are waiving. I would hope they would enroll.
So what would that do to the savings calculation that you just mentioned?
I had calculated out some of those things. I don't have them right on me right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
And again, I don't have scientific facts, so I just basically
Yeah, so let's see, well, five, let's just say the premium's about $500 for a single plan. And so if all 20 of those people enrolled, you know, you'd be looking at $10,000. So perhaps it would be a wash.
Are they all single?
I'm just saying if they only enrolled a single. I know not all 20 of them would enroll though, because you're never going to have like your people that are on Medicare enroll. Your people that are on military insurance.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know what that breakdown demographic is. But so what I did, I just said, okay, if we get 10 additional people and they enroll at the current makeup of our current enrollees for 10 people. It would, and the number you give us, is that the cost share number or the cost of the project or the, the cost of the county?
Which, which number?
So when you go down in any one of those options, take the four-tier Blue Cross one where the single plan is 581. Is that right? I believe, non-grandfathered. So we went anyway, 581, 1104, 1308, 1947. Is that the cost of the insurance or is that the cost of the county's participation?
That's the total cost of the insurance.
Okay, and so we would pay X amount, whatever's agreed to of that amount?
Correct.
Okay. So if we, if we did get 10 additional people, it'd probably be about another 100 to $110,000, according to my unscientific calculation.
Right. We'd still, you know.
And on this, Joetta, with these, I mean comparable to what we're paying now, is it pretty comparable or is it a lot higher?
It's a lot lower, yeah. It's, it's like $130,000 less than what we're paying a year now.
So even if these other people get on, then we're sort of going to act of breaking even? I guess, yeah. I myself like the four-tier plan. I don't know if I'm a fan of 100% for anybody, because I believe everybody should still put a little bit of their own skin into the game. So that's where I'm at on that.
Joetta, I have a question if I could. So do you know how many, and I'll speak from my position, would go from a family in a, in a four-tier system? I could actually save money and save the county money by going to a husband-wife. We have, I mean, do we have county employees that would go save from a family to a cost savings to a husband-wife?
Yeah, that's actually what these figures are calculated on. Yeah, so the, the more tiers people gave us, the better savings. Like, I mean, a, a single was like a $200 savings, employee children was like 500. You know what I mean? So it's, it's big savings, not so much for employee and spouse. But it's, it's still a big, nice savings for them.
But for one parent and like a child, that's a huge savings.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay. And what is the, like, the, you're growing 80% on the one and then you talk about 100% on the one and then 80 on the other?
Yeah, because with those calculations, we could still save money, yet provide a better benefit, you know, for those employees.
Okay.
In, in year one?
Right.
Right?
Right.
Next year versus the current year?
Right, and these, this, these proposals are for this whole next year. So, you know, we know the Indy, the plan we're on now is going to go up, so. And we know if we lock this in, it won't go up for a year. And if we're able to control costs, then that's how you can control, you know, your premiums also.
So if we lock this in, does that start January 1?
Yes.
Of 2023?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think this is a huge retention. And I think that this would be something huge for employees that would want to come to work for Stark County. Especially with the four-tier program. I've had a lot of people, you know, talk about the two-tier and it's just really hard.
Well, I think it's two conversations. One, you have a deadline and give a notice to the existing carrier to opt out, right?
Yes, we haven't got that yet, but I expect it any day now.
Okay.
And then
And then so the, the other decision is what tier do you want to move to? So if you, if we opt out of the Sanford Plan, the state of the PERS program, opt into the Blue Cross Blue Shield four-tier non-grandfathered program. I think we can do that now. I think as far as contribution from the county, I think that's a discussion that has to go into the budget piece of this formula. And then we can kind of navigate through that based on some other factors that we have in front of us. I don't know if that's okay with you.
Sorry, Neil. When we switch like this, are there people going to have to go and get physicals and stuff like that to get onto these plans?
No. With employer-sponsored plans.
Somebody's got an existing condition, does this, does it transfer with, with the insurance?
Yeah, it's portable, mhm.
And I know this has to go onto the budget, but with all the research that Joetta did, I think that we really should take in consideration of what her recommendations are. I know that Commissioner Marsh has a, you know, an issue with 100%.
Yeah, I guess I should ask for your recommendation.
I did, I gave it, yeah.
Yeah.
Joetta, I actually had a question on the out-of-pocket maximum portion. If we go with a non-grandfathered plan, it almost doubles.
It goes up, yes, because with an, with a grandfathered plan, we can actually have a separate out-of-pocket maximum for your services and then another one for your prescription. So really, our maximum out-of-pocket for people is more than the 1,500 or whatever you see there. It, you have to add in the prescription also, which is, I think, 1,200 more at least.
1,200 more? So no matter what the, the non-grandfathered plan, the out-of-pocket maximums will be larger.
Yes, because they combine them together, so you know what your out-of-pocket maximum is. It's not
But it's more than
I would have to look at the, the numbers. But it's, it looks like it's more on paper. But what's hidden is the prescription out-of-pocket. It's not listed with our grandfathered plan at all.
But people who aren't paying a significant amount for prescriptions, let's say they only have one prescription. They could be paying up to 2,700 out-of-pocket as opposed to 1,500 out-of-pocket.
Well, prescriptions are always just going to pay your copay.
That's all I had.
So then, then would you pay single for everyone? In that the differences with family or whatever, you know, would be at the 80/20?
That, that's what I recommended.
Okay.
The single premium is quite a bit less than any other premium. So, I mean, we're already giving the people with children and spouse and family quite a bit more, you know, benefit.
You know, when we talk about the out-of-pocket being a little more, but yet the insurance is a lot cheaper for the employees. So you have to take that into consideration also.
No, I'm just looking at the grandfathered versus the non-grandfathered. Do you actually pay a little bit more per plan with the non-grandfathered than you do for the grandfathered? But she's saying that it's because of the, some of it is part of the preventative and the prescription services. That you're, if you look at your chart, it actually, like, 57226 is the grandfathered with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Whereas it's 58140 for a single plan with the grandfathered Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So you are paying more for Blue Cross, Blue Shield with the non-grandfathered. But Joetta was saying, I had concerns with the out-of-pocket, but Joetta was saying that it makes up for the fact that it doesn't put as many restrictions on the prescriptions. Is that correct? Or the preventative care?
So like right now, our out-of-pocket maximum on our current plan is 1,500. And then 3,500. And so that's, that's all you're, you know, ba- basically looking at. And on the non-grandfathered plan, it goes up to 2,700, I believe it is. Because it includes all the pharmacy in there. So, so I guess what I'm trying to say is when you have two separate buckets. You know, let's say nobody has pharmacy, that's fine. But if they do have a lot of pharmacy, they have to do that out-of-pocket. Plus, if they were to be seen, you know, for anything else, they would have to do that out-of-pocket also.
Now, when I look down here, it looks like the pharmacy matches between the grandfathered and the non-grandfathered.
Yeah, those are the copays. Copays match, but it's the maximum out-of-pocket you can pay for pharmacy. Is, is what's not on any of these charts. So that's what, you know, I can get more information for you on that.
So really, the only thing you're saving on between the grandfathered and non-grandfathered is just the pharmacy side. But you're actually paying more money for the non-grandfathered.
You're paying more money because it covers 100% of your preventative care. All 120 items at 100%. There's no cost share for any of your employees. So like an example of that is a colonoscopy. If you were to go get a colonoscopy under our current plan, we can make people pay, I don't know, whatever, their 1,500 maximum out-of-pocket. Whereas with a non-grandfathered plan, it's covered in 100%.
So there's a lot of items that are covered at 100% in the non-grandfathered.
That's why it costs a bit more.
Okay, okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept for Health Insurance Brevera Insurance, Blue Cross Blue Shield, North Dakota Blue Access Four-Tier Non-Grandfathered Plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you, Joetta.
That took a lot of work.
Yeah.
A lot of work.
Thanks, Dean.
Now we got the ARPA funding requests.
So to start out with the sheet, number one is what Mr. Eldon Mayer was talking about with the siren radios. Last year, there was a mo-, well, I should say the beginning of this year, and I have the specific minutes. From April 5th, I don't think my, there we go, April 5th, 2022. There was a motion made to put the radios funding for, in the 2023 budget. And it was discussed in that meeting that there's no way that the radios would arrive this year. But they did arrive this year. So I would just look for the commission to amend the motion that was made in the April 5th, 2022 budget by Commissioner Zander and seconded by Commissioner Messer to approve the replacement of radios. And I would recommend that the commission does it out of our 2022 ARPA money for 22389880.
Is that where we were doing it out of before?
It just, the motion out of before was just to put it in the 2023 budget. It didn't say where it was being paid out of.
Okay, so did that 22380 show up in the sheriff's department budget?
No, because
No, for 23?
No, it, it was not because we received the radios and the invoice this year and
That's not what I asked.
It's not, it's not in the budget.
Okay, it's not in the budget. So we don't have, if we put this in and pay it through ARPA, we don't have to pull it out of the sheriff's 2023 budget?
No, we do not.
I'll make them, I make the motion to prove that fee for the, to pay out of there, out of the ARPA funds or for, and amend our previous motion.
What, ARPA from 222? Right?
Yeah, we're paying for it this year. This isn't for next year's, yeah.
I'll second the motion.
I'll second, but a point of, we don't amend the motion that's been pre-, this has to be a new motion that we're doing separately. So I, I think we walk away from the previous motion. This motion we can dealt with, it's just a technicality, but I think it's important to have that distinction, so.
Mr. Hope, we don't need to amend that when we already made a motion in April?
I, I actually think to clarify it is, Mr. Messer's motion should include a provision to rescind.
Yes.
It's Dean's motion.
Shouldn't that be two motions though, Jim? Who made, who made, did I make that first motion?
Yes, Commissioner Zander, you made that motion.
So I, I will now
We have a motion on the, we have a motion on the table.
I will offer a motion to rescind.
Okay, hold on. Excuse me, Mr. Zander. Commissioner Zander, we have a motion on the table ready, so do you want to just withdraw?
No, if I can, I'm sorry, and I, maybe I messed things up. But you can proceed with the motion that Mr. Messer can proceed to rescind.
I actually made the motion.
It's actually Dean's motion, which is fine, I'm fine.
Yeah, I guess my motion, I'd give it, and we just rescind their previous motion.
I agree with that in my
Oh, did you? Okay, I'm sorry.
No, I will now to the rescission.
I added that to, I'll rescind the previous motion.
Okay, the previous motion for, in the April meeting is now rescinded. Yes, April 5th meeting is rescinded. We'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Now we need a motion to approve the money to be paid in 2022 since the radios came in early.
It's part of my motion.
That was part of his admission.
Motion's been made on that.
So you rescinded and covered?
There is.
Okay.
Okay, the next part I had, the commissioners wanted to see based on what we were looking at with ARPA funding, what, that's the estimated number of employees at different dollar amounts, so you could see what that total number was. I don't know if you want to save that for the end of the budget meeting, but that's what that is giving you totals for. Our next part is the 2022 ARPA other requests. You guys did already approve the first four. You can see approved. The library contacted and said that they understood that, you know, $3 million wasn't going to be coming through from the county at this point. But they would like to go forward to the other counties and ask for funding. And so Stark, they need some sort of commitment from Stark first in order to go to other counties. So they actually sent a different letter and requested a county match for expansion of 300,000.
I think that they could still go to the other counties. I don't know if they need the Stark County first before they go to the other counties. I would like to see what the other counties do and see where we're at with our ARPA money.
They were informed that the other counties They were informed that the other counties wanted to know that they had Stark County's approval and how much Stark County was willing to give before they come before their commission. So they were actually told that very specifically by the other counties. And that's why she came back in at a proposal of three hundred thousand so she can go to those other county meetings and tell them that Stark County is willing to commit three hundred thousand.
Is there, do you have that letter from her in here?
Yes, I did put the letter in there. It's right here.
Oh, I saw that one. That's just not the one that she was talking about having to go to other counties?
Oh, she didn't, she told me that, um, she told us that in the previous meeting, and then she also mentioned that before she submitted this request.
How much does the city give them?
Three million.
That's coming from sales tax.
Yes.
That's coming from sales tax, though. So everybody in the county pays sales tax, so I think. I, uh, Madam Chairman, I'd like to have us move to the last two and have that other discussion on the library, maybe, whatever, or else I'll move to table that request at this point.
All right. I'll second that.
Okay, move to table the request from the library. Commissioner Mess- Messer made the motion, Commissioner, Commissioner Marsh made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's tabled.
Okay, the next one we have is social services compensation bonus. Um, Ms. Artha, do you? I think you had the information for that.
Printed this out this morning, if you want to send that down. Keep being on the um, Rough Rider um, board, zone board, um. Now, there's the difference between we have the zone board employees and we have the state employees. The state employees, when the consolidation happened for all of social services on the five counties, the state employees did get raises. And um, they did get kind of moved to different categories when they took on the state jobs. But the zone employees, which means that still consisted of the Stark County employees, it consisted of the employees in Hettinger, Dunn County, Golden Valley County, Billings County. And those, for some reason, those zone employees, which are still county employees, they did not get any increase in wage in two thousand twenty. In two thousand twenty-one, they got a one point five or a hundred dollars a month increase. In two thousand twenty-two, the zone employees got an average of a two percent increase in January, which was on the legislative approved. And we also have to remember that when this did turn into a zone, they categorized a lot of the zone employees. And some zone employees even took a decrease in wage. Some employees got, depending on where they were, on the population and everything, they got an increase. But a lot of the employees in our area either didn't get an increase or they got less. So they are very much behind. In two thousand twenty-three, zone employees will receive an average of two percent increase in January. And that's, of course, again, on the legislative approval. For the more, majority of the staff, this will be less than a hundred dollars a month increase in their wage. So their one percent of the August twenty-two zone payroll is twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and one dollars for the fifty staff. And that would be five hundred and sixty-two dollars each. Is what the zone board had went, and we were talking as the zone board to just try to compensate. I mean, these used to be the Stark County employees. And, I mean, they didn't have, they didn't have the choice once this was turned into a zone. And I just think that they deserve some compensation for what they do, everything they do with the elders, the children. And when we met, uh, the zone board met, there's nine of us. We had talked about it. We also talked about the ARPA funds. I also called Ward County because they did the same thing to see if they did it right and legal. Um, we also did talk to Bismarck to make sure this would be okay with the ARPA funding. Um, as of now Dunn County, they went and they approved it at thirteen thousand dollars that they would put towards this. Now, this money would all go to the host county, which is Billings County. Billings County then would give this to the employees because they're the host county and they do the payroll for the five zone, for the five zones, or the one zone in the five counties. And then we also talked about two percent, which would be eleven twenty-four each. Hettinger is do, is, I think they're having a meeting today. Hettinger was worried they wouldn't quite get to the ten thousand dollars. Golden Valley is doing it today. Billings County is on board. Dunn County is on board. Dunn County went and took a little, asked for a little extra money in case we have to help Hettinger and Golden Valley a little bit. Because all the staff members of these fifty, they don't just stay in Stark County. I mean, they now go to, and they have a lot of windshield time where they drive to Golden Valley. They drive to Billings County, Dunn County, Mod area. So what we decided as a board is all five, if all five counties, you know, aren't on board, this is not going to work for these employees. But they deserve something way more than the state has given them. And so what I am asking right now is for fifteen thousand dollars. And that's most likely, maybe, um, probably eleven to twelve thousand dollars will be used. But I am asking for Stark County to do the fifteen, so we have enough. Billings County for surely will do the ten. Golden Valley's looking at it to make sure they can get to ten, and so is Hettinger.
I've got a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
What was the official transfer date of the authority from the county to the zones? Two years ago?
Uh, four years ago.
Well, that's.
Yeah, it's been, because that was right when I started and then became part of the zone.
So the follow-up question, and maybe I misinterpreted your comment. You said we had the county employees, which were doing the, the, uh, we were doing, and we, we transferred those uh, to the zone, which is uh, basically kind of supposed to be fully funded by the state, correct?
Yes.
And then we have the gap because you have the two-year funding mandate because of the legislature. So the, I mean, are we talking all fifty employees that are participating in this? Because you had mentioned something, and again, I may have misinterpreted. You said you have Hettinger County employees, you have um, other county employees. Is that your calculations when you talk about the thirteen, the ten, the eleven?
I am talking about the fifty employees that are associated with the zone in all five counties.
Okay.
And most of them are Stark County employee, I mean, I, are zone employees.
Right, but they were previously county employees.
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, this is a big issue. You're correct. At the association meeting uh, this week in Bismarck, there's a lot of pressure to do catch-up payments on this regard and trying to get the legislature to do this to where they know they left this gap, okay? So my question is, if we fund this fifteen thousand, I, I mean, I want to support the employees. What happens? Does that jeopardize the potential for reimbursement to the local counties that participate in our Rough Rider zone?
No, not at all.
So if, if.
That I already researched that and talked to the state.
If the state fills that bu- a gap, that fifteen would come back to us.
No, the fifteen wouldn't come back to us because they're going to fill the, they're not filling the gap from two thousand twenty.
No, there is, there is conversation that they would backfill because they realize that the, this, this gap was there, where the, where the zone employees all across the state, like you mentioned, were kind of left out, or however you want to call it. And I, I, my question is, if we give fifteen to this and the state gives the zone fifteen back, what happens to that fifteen? What happens to Dunn County's thirteen? What happens to Billings County's or Hettinger County's ten?
Well, from, when I talk to legislation, they are looking at the bill to make sure it's from now on. The fact that they're going to go back to two thousand and twenty and make this right.
It seems to me that's a matter to talk to the legislature. Yeah, well, but, and that's my point. I don't want to be double, doubling up on here. I mean, our county employees in two thousand twenty didn't get a raise either. Twenty twenty, or excuse me, I, I might be one. We, we went one year without raises, the following year we went two percent, and then last.
But these employees didn't get raises, plus a lot of them got decreased in wages. I mean, everybody that had take, and I guess Kent, Commissioner Zander will know, since, I mean, this was put together that before it became a zone, the Stark County Social Services employees got very well taken care of because we knew the job they did. You know, we didn't have the ability to say, no, we don't want to be part of the zone. Yes, we want to be. Those employees didn't get a choice to where, well, we're going to go somewhere else if we take a wage cut.
Okay, I, I understand that. That's not my point. My point is, they got transferred and they got reclassified or all these other.
Well, you can't recreate the Will Neal. I don't know if that's going to happen. I don't have a crystal ball. So I don't know, but I just think that these employees for retention issues and morale.
I'm all in and supporting them, but I, I think the question needs to be asked, if there is a backfill on the, on these funds, where's that backfill go? That's all I'm asking.
I, there's not going to be a backfill.
Well, I don't know. I, I spent two days over there. It seems to be a priority, or at least a high conversation piece, to take care of these zones because they know they made a mistake and they, and they overlooked this. So um, that's all I'm, I mean, I, like I said, I can support your request, no problem. But what I don't want to have is have become a double dip situation. And if we're filling the gap and then the state reimburses us, it's great. But if we're filling the gap and then the, the fifteen comes back to the zone again as additional employee compensation, then it's not fair to our employees who are, who are sitting here who did, who did not go through this. I, I don't know if you follow my mindset on that. That, that's my focus for the question.
I understand you on that. It's just that these employees didn't have a choice. And I mean, I know the zero and, you know, but like, the one point five, and then again, a two percent, and then a two percent, which was a hundred dollars. We took, we took better care of our employees than this since two thousand and twenty.
Carla, one thing that they aren't mentioning on here, though, is yes, I do see the one point five and two percent. But them switching over to Billings County, being their um, zone, like their zoning staff, they did go from seventy-five percent insurance to a hundred percent insurance. So their cost for that, you know, was a couple hundred dollars a month that they didn't have to pay out of pocket anymore.
Yes.
So there was other benefits, not just they didn't get a dollar, you know, a zero percent. So that's quite significant. So there is other things on there.
Well, there is. There is the insurance. I mean, that's pretty much it is what they got, but like I said, a lot of them took a wage decrease. So you can't even really look at the two hundred dollars. Because yes, that is a benefit, but a lot of them ended up taking a decrease because of our population here compared to CAS, compared to other counties. The way the pay scale worked.
Who appro- who provided this?
Diane Mortensen.
Okay.
I have to agree with what Neil said, that the, for, for the association of counties that they did, there's definitely talk there about them compensating them, so they're looking, the legislature is looking at that, that was talked about several times, it was brought up.
Well, and I can definitely talk and ask and make sure that if this is compensated, that then we get this money back. And I can make sure that that is talked to Diane Mortensen, so if that does happen, then this money will be returned. That is not going to be a problem.
So I would be willing, if it's appropriate, uh, I don't know if we can make a motion that says we would provide fifteen thousand to the zone, provided if there is any reimbursed backfill that we get appropriated in the percentage of the other counties. So we may not get a hundred percent backfill, but if we get eighty percent, or if the zone gets eighty percent of this additional funds, that eighty percent comes back to us as well.
Okay.
So, so moved if that's appropriate. I don't know if it's appropriate. To make a contingency motion, that's.
It's a motion. I'll second it.
Yeah.
Okay, I get a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner, our, our chair votes aye. And um, uh, this will be coming out of the ARPA funds.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, it's on the ARPA funds list. Yep.
And the check will be um, sent to Billings County.
I have a little note there, yep. Lastly, we have.
I just want to, just before, I just want to make sure so everybody that the the employees at, the zone employees are just very much appreciative that the zone board even brought this up. Because they were feeling a little bit. Since two thousand twenty, they were just kind of feeling a little bit banged up for the amount of work they did with, even during COVID and everything. Because even on the COVID, there was COVID bonuses that went out, but the state regulated and told Diane who got the COVID vote bonuses and who didn't. So not even all the employees got them. So this is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
The last thing we have on the um, funding request list is from the House of Manah. You guys received their letter that they sent in your packets. They're requesting twenty-five thousand dollars as they are looking at a new building. And they were wondering if the county was willing to contribute twenty-five thousand dollars to that new building.
Do you know if they went to the city? Do you know if they got anything from the city?
They have here that, um, sorry. Yes, they did get money from the city of Dickinson. It says, we are looking for additional sources of funding to help cover the cost of moving. They are applying for the MDU Foundation Grant and the North Dakota Community Foundation Grant to complement our existing support from United Way, the City of Dickinson, and private donors. So they are already getting funding from the city.
I guess it would be nice to know what kind of grants come through and the amount of money they have, is my opinion.
Can I ask a question I would have for the auditor? This is, this would be an appropriate use of ARPA funds?
They've pretty much taken all restrictions off.
A lot of these organizations do kind of give us a budget to accommodate their request.
Yes.
I'm not opposed at all to helping because, again, it's a worthwhile organization. It would be nice to see their budget.
There's nothing wrong with asking for it.
I, is there an urgency on this then, Karen, at all? Could we?
They just asked to be included in the budget next year.
So if we're coming out of ARPA, the time, time crunch is kind of not there.
Why can't we request the financial report and or uh, more information on their building and their fundraising activities? That typically.
Sure.
They, they weren't planning on, they just asked to be included in our budget for next year. So I think if you guys just kind of maybe make a decision by January, that'd be totally fine.
We can still ask them for that information, though.
Yes, I can ask them for that. Yes. Okay.
Commissioner Messer, did you table the library till the end here, or did you want to table it? You're tabling it till next month.
Uh, again, because there is no time um, thing. I know they're talking about that they need to go to the counties and Stark needs to do something first before, you know, it's um, that uh, conversation.
I just guess I, I don't, I mean, I'm not quite sure why they, Stark, they have, I mean, it's, that library is for all the counties, so I'm not quite sure why they think they have to come to Stark first. I mean, maybe they want to know what Stark would give for the other counties.
Yep, and I agree with that. I, my big thing is, you know, they can say the city gave them money, and the city is sixty percent of the revenue, or the economy in Stark County, but so that forty percent that the rural residents take up, uh, we are contributing to their contribution.
Yes.
And so, um, you know, that, that's where I'm at at this point.
Okay.
Well, you, you've previously wanted to uh, table it.
Yes.
And so.
It's at this point, it's tabled.
Is your motion, have you made a motion to table it and bring it back when? December, January?
Tabled motion can be brought back at any point, but I would I would table it till the next meeting if that is appropriate.
Okay, we'll table it till November.
I have tabled written down, so that's.
Okay.
Now we have the two thousand and twenty-three county budget. Um, the open hearing was, there was not a time on that listed. But there isn't, it's listed as an open hearing and a final approval. So if anybody in the crowd has any comments on that, we will hear them. Okay, with, if there's no comments, then we will close the open hearing and look at the final approval.
Commissioners, I went through and made the changes that were requested in the last budget meeting and updated your total sheets, which are on the top. Um, for the general fund, we are looking at, um, and of course, you know, a lot of this is estimated. For two thousand and twenty-three, we're looking at an estimated revenue of eleven million, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and fifteen cents. And for um expenses, we are looking at um, excuse me, total expenses estimated at ten million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety and ninety cents. A couple of things to keep in mind is when I do do the estimated revenue, I do have to put in an estimate in there for um what we're receiving in oil and gas, and that is quite a fluctuation. So alls I can do is go by this year. You know, which if I go by this year would be, and it's the same as next year, it'd be right around two point five million, but that is a big variable and can change depending on where um the oil and gas barrel prices are.
Well, and I think that goes on to the percentage of what Stark County made also, and I think that we kind of fell in a different percentage. So I think our oil and gas revenue is even going to go up.
So how that works is um actually, basically, if you fall below um below a certain threshold, um, the oil and gas money has to go completely into the general fund as opposed to being allocated out to uh County Road and Bridge. To supplement, because we fell below the threshold and all the money is going into the general fund, that did make us eligible for Prairie Dog funding for County Road and Bridge. And that's where that estimated amount came in there of, on the County Road and Bridge, of three million, something dollars. Which it sounds like they are going to receive, so that will help greatly. But that's where the kind of the differences are. So yes, it fell below the threshold, but we compensated County Road and Bridge with state aid distribution. And then also, it sounds like uh quite a significant amount of Prairie Dog funding. So that's where the differences are there. And um currently, if we go by our estimated tax statements, we put the estimated tax statements at the same levy as last year's final tax statements. Um, the commission can only go down from there. What I'm looking for for the commission is an not only an approval of the budget, but you would also have to decide on a dollar amount that you think is sufficient to fund our general fund. Instead of going by the mills, I would like to go by the dollar amount. So that way, if you have a specific dollar amount in in mind, when I put it into the formula, if the values change, anything like that, you're not gonna just, you know, if our values go up, then we're not just gonna be taking more tax dollars. I prefer to just go with um whatever dollar amount the commission wishes to go with.
And I I I think that's good. And I know that the value of the mill has gone from two oh something, small, low two hundreds to like two ten, two twelve, I think you mentioned.
Yes. So currently, the value of one mill is right around two hundred and twelve thousand.
It was two oh six before?
No, it was, um, I think, two.
Two oh one.
Two oh one.
Yeah.
Two hundred.
So, and I'll just throw a suggestion out there so we can keep this conversation going. So at this meeting a year ago, we took what would be the top line on your general fund page as far as general property tax levies. We lowered that uh in that budget by about um a million dollars, which uh equated to about almost five mills. And based on the information that the auditor has provided us with the the revenue stream, even though our expenses are going to be up significantly, I certainly think we could replicate that again. And and still keep funds for the capital improvements we need to do in the courthouse, our road projects, fund our employees and all these other expenses that we operate on based on on that. So I would throw that out for discussion. I think we could probably target that five point five million area. But again, I'm I'm open for discussion in that regard.
I think with the way our oil revenue is going up, I think we could even do a little bit better for property tax relief this year. I mean, I think that significantly, it's not with what we have in reserves and what we have, we're gonna have coming in with oil revenue. I think we could even give a little bit more property tax relief.
Well, five point five would be about one point one oh four million. The uh the the bucket is just about to fill, which is a hundred and fifteen million for the um cities and counties for across the state. If you look at, and I got it in here somewhere, at if you, you know, I don't know where, we we don't have that crystal ball on eighty dollar oil or a hundred dollar oil. But, you know, each increment of ten dollars uh does play a significant role. If so, a year from now, if it's seventy dollar oil versus sixty dollar oil versus eighty or ninety or a hundred dollar oil. I I just think we're doing it right by the taxpayer. We're all taxpayers. That would take our levied amount from two thousand and twenty, you know, from basically over seven million down to five and a half and that on an annualized basis. So I I think that's fair. I want sustainability in this. Because if we have to go up a million bucks, you know, you guys might want to buy a new cell phone plan because your phone will ring off the hook. So again, that's, I mean, I I've done a number of calculations, done the numbers, made the phone, same phone calls you have made. I'm just trying to be sustainable and consistent in this regard, so.
I I will say that I have had um discussions with Commissioner Messer about some of the different ideas, as he does work a lot in real estate and kind of knows how they um greatly affect every property. And I think that if the commission was willing to just kind of um, you know, let's say five point five million, and let's say the commission was like, we don't want to raise that dollar amount over the next few years. Let's try to just keep it at five point five million as opposed to just levying two million dollars this year and then going back to six point five or seven next year. That probably is sustainable. It would also be taking that reserve fund, any sort of reserve fund we have down to a more reasonable amount at a slower rate. So we would be, you know, we're already going to be eating into our reserve, no matter what we do. But at least that'll, you know, spread it out over a few years, and then we can look at it every year as we see where the oil and gas revenue is.
So at that, do we see even our in our reserve then, in our general, then are we um below or at the seventy-five percent threshold?
We physically would never be at the seventy-five percent threshold in this regard unless if you decided to, I don't know, build a new courthouse.
I don't think the, and I'm glad Mr. Hope is here today. I don't want us as a commission setting our budget based on some arbitrary number that was kind of pushed down to the counties from the state level, not realizing the unintended consequences. I would venture to guess that a year from now, the seventy-five percent deal is not going to be a deal. Uh, it is overwhelming support amongst the legislators. I've I've kind of tried to take the lead on this because I'm a bottom-up guy, not a top-down guy, and and I don't think the state should be telling the counties how to set our budgets, and that's where the seventy-five percent would come in. And the Association of Counties, we're a hundred percent on board. We're gonna, we've actually drafted legislation that we're gonna introduce in the next thirty days to uh uh into the Legislative Council. And so I I I understand the seventy-five percent is a conversation piece, but I would, I want us to set our budget, not have somebody else do it for us.
And I agree with that. I just, it's not arbitrary. It's century code. Is that not right or true?
Well, the century code can have certainly have arbitrary numbers in it. This is, this is an arbitrary number, but it is in the century code.
They are going to be looking at it in this next session, and I would encourage, you know, coming, this coming budgeted year, if a few of the commissioners would sit down with me and maybe we can come up with some kind of more of a comprehensive plan for Stark County for any sort of excess funds, but it's not near the excess funds that is is being painted at all. You know, those amounts are literally including every city we have, and unfortunately, they don't take um any of that into consideration with our bottom, our bottom dollar amount. So we couldn't even touch, you know, some of those for two years if we wanted to. And so they don't take that into consideration on the state level. They just say you have to include every dollar you have, no matter if it's allocated or not. You have to include every dollar you have. So the question that I posed to the state is, um, you know, you are making us follow this and, you know, where's the state at with this? And what they said is um, do as we say, not as we do.
Because you had said, you know, previously that if we didn't get to there, you know, you were gonna sign that, that said the commissioners approve this, but we're not in there and you were gonna sign that and send that in. So I just wanted to make sure.
So I have to.
On the same page.
I just have to sign off on the the audit. If I have, I have the minutes and such, you know, the unfortunately, the state auditor does like to come off, come after the county auditors when you do not meet their century code thresholds. And so if the commission chooses not to move any of the funds or whatever else, I mean, I have to protect myself in that, and that's your choice not to move the funds. But I do have to sign off on the audit.
Yeah, you have to sign off on the audit.
Yes.
But ag- again, take uh the research that we've done, led by Mr. Hope, the research that we've done, led led by the Legislative Council at the Capitol. And, you know, we are taking this uh levy down. We are the only taxing entity in Stark County that has done this. And we're almost thirty percent lower or twenty-five percent lower than we were four or five years ago. We're the only entity to do that. The city hasn't done it. The counties, the school districts haven't done it. We've done it. We've taken the lead on this. And so we are uh basically deficit spending, if that's the term you want to do to draw that uh thing down. What the state would like you to do, folks, is they'd like you to take that levy, that whether it's six point three or five point five, they'd like you to take that to zero. Okay? And then next year, take it up to six point three. They don't pay taxes in the state. They don't, they aren't elected, or they don't pay taxes in our county. They're not elected to our county. They're not responsible to anybody. They're just trying to micromanage the counties. I'm sorry, maybe I'm a little old school. I'm like, I I don't buy into that uh thing, especially when we have all the momentum right now with the work we've done in the past twelve months to rectify this and make it accurate and make it county-friendly. The way you get around this is you hire somebody outside the state auditor to do your audit. And there's a handful of counties who have done that. And they don't get written up. They don't get the PR uh thing that, ooh, you got the seventy-five percent deal. So I'm not saying that's the way we go. I'm just saying, let's look at sustainability here. I mean, if we want to pay for the repairs of the courthouse, we're talking about doing a facility out at the fairgrounds. Uh, how are you gonna pay for that if you don't have some money in the bank? So that's, sorry.
And I think that's a very good idea, Commissioner Messer, about getting an outside auditor or getting somebody to, you know, to look at that. We had brought that up before.
I.
I just think that that's a great way to look at it instead of using the state auditor, or you just have a little more of an insurance policy.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
When you get somebody
Yep.
that looks over the books a second time.
And I'm all in on that.
Actually, we did um find some options to switch over from the state auditors, if that's something the commission would like to do. When we were at the conference this past weekend, we had a conversation with Ida Bailey. They said they'd be willing to take on Stark County. And they're large enough to do it. That's our our biggest ink, is whether or not they're a large enough firm to take us on. And I'm not opposed to it. There is going to be more money upfront, especially the first year as we get established and they have to go through a lot more of our stuff, you know. But that is definitely something I would look into for for next year's audit. And so we can make that decision probably in November or December. But that's already something that we are looking at. I will say, oil and gas revenue, um, I said I put it two point five million. If that goes down at all, um, we could potentially only get a million dollars. And so that'll already take our revenue down a million dollars, and then we're already gonna be basically breaking even. So there is um, I think that's sustainability, and if you guys were willing to say, you know, we don't want to raise taxes, we want to lower them, but let's do it over a course of like the next couple of years, I think that that is excellent instead of having the the roller coaster.
So what items do we have left? Let's move this on. What items do we have left to finalize the budget?
I just, I would need you to approve the general budget as presented to finalize the budget, and then I would also need you to set the dollar amount that you would like to levy for the general fund for tax year, for the.
Then as far as the employee, we have to finalize the employee compensation package as well.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so which one would you like to take first?
If you want to do the, well, I think we already said five percent on the employee compensation.
Well, there's four parts to it.
Oh, you're talking about the ARPA and stuff like that. I would probably say do that first in case I need to do a quick calculation to get to the final number for your budget, so.
Well, do we make a motion on the levy and what we want to give for
I'm fine with that.
property relief since we're on that right now instead of jumping around?
I'll move that the top line, thirty-one hundred dash thirty-one ten. They said at five point five million dollars.
So that is the motion for the relief of property taxes at five point five million?
For the levied amount, not.
For the levied amount, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
What else, Karen?
Okay, did you want to discuss the dollar amount in the ARPA for the employees next?
We can discuss all of them if you would.
Okay.
And I don't know how much, again, to move this along, I'm gonna start a discussion. So I'm gonna make a motion, which will kind of piggyback on the motion we made last month, that the salary package to the uh Stark County employees be increased by five percent. I uh would add that the, whatever we want to call it, the ARPA inflation package to the Stark County employees based on full-time employment, prorated, uh if it is part-time, be set at uh one thousand five hundred dollars per employee payable uh December first of. be set at one thousand five hundred dollars per employee payable December first of twenty twenty-two. So we get those funds out to those employees for, before the end of the year. I would move that the newly adopted insurance four-tier program we discussed earlier be funded at ninety percent for the single policy and seventy-five percent for the other three policies. And I would move that, I believe this is still an unresolved issue, that the the department heads' salaries be set at their line and that any overtime, we give them the ability unlimited time to flex those hours.
Commissioner Messer, these needs to be separate motions.
Okay. Well, I think we do the first three because if you pass one without the other, that's going to affect how I think on the other. So I'm trying to present it as a package. I'm willing to take the last one off if you want, but I'm just saying I want to, let's, let's move this forward. So are you willing to take the first three? Salary up or insurance?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that okay? Okay, so I'll redo my motion and exclude department head compensation. Salary at five percent, ARPA fifteen hundred for full-time employees. The insurance compensation package, ninety percent for the employee and seventy-five percent for any package above that for the other three tiers.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
You got the second.
And the ARPA would be by, or in December.
Commissioner Messer, one thing I did want to point out is I know we're doing a different health plan and we're going to four tiers, but if you do keep it at seventy-five percent for the family plan that people are on, they will actually be paying more money.
That's why we're in discussion now.
Yep. I was just letting everybody know, more money.
Joetta here, so she can explain it.
That's the same reason that I came up, yeah.
How much more?
Forty-two dollars and ninety cents more a month for the family plan. And, and that's kind of why I proposed the eighty percent because
We went to eighty percent.
If we did eighty, then they would be paying, you know, fifty-four dollars and forty-eight cents less than what they're paying now.
I'm willing to listen to that. My, are we in the discussions?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The, the reason I did the ninety and the seventy-five is the insurance is the last line that we have control over. Okay? So we can control salaries. We can control the, the ARPA's funding. And we're subject to somebody else on these insurance thing. And, and if we get in at a good rate and we don't get the participation based on Joetta's information, the cost of this program's going to go up more, and we don't have any control of that. And so our, just for information, the salary package is, cost to the county is three hundred and ten thousand dollars. The ARPA package is one hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. The insurance, I would be surprised if it's a savings because I think we will get additional enrollment, and so it's probably a break even maybe in that regard. So I'm open for discussion, but that's
Well, if, if you're only paying at that rate, it's going to be a lot more savings because most of the savings I calculated was for our employees. Like a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars savings for them.
And we got to take into consideration on the survey, the employees were way up on the insurance rather than the, than the COLA. I mean, I just think that Joetta's, I mean, with all the research she did on all this insurance and her percentages that she's viewing, I think that is something we need to stick with because
And, and if, if you're into taking recommendations, that's fine. The, Joetta, you, you said the savings to the county under the four tier, if you go with the eighty percent contribution, correct me if I'm wrong, it's twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty cents.
Well, so the total, the total savings overall is a hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars. And I was just breaking that up into if we went with those new levels of contributions, it would save the employees a hundred and twenty-four thousand and us approximately the nine thousand. But if you change, you know, those contributions, if you only go ninety for single, of course, more of that money is going to be a county savings than an employee savings and
Yeah. And my goal was to try to make the insurance cost to the county a break even for this year when we said switch the programs and then take another look at it. So if I'm misreading your numbers.
Yeah, because the way I had it, it, we were saving ourselves nine thousand dollars.
Nine thousand, yeah, without any additional enrollment. If you got additional enrollment from employees. Which also increases the cost to the county. And I agree. If we can figure out a way to control those costs, it's great, but I'm just saying the other two are four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars of the cost. And if it's eighty.
With getting the extra enrollment, it actually benefits.
Yeah.
Yes.
Benefit our plan.
Yeah, but it's not going to make it less expensive.
It's always, more people are always going to cost you more money.
Amen.
I mean, if we had three people on our insurance, we could save a ton of money, but you know, that's not our goal.
I seconded the motion, but I wanted to get into the discussion of changing it to eighty percent.
And I can live with that. I'm just making sure everybody understands the cost associated.
Yes, and I appreciate the fact that you do the numbers the way you do.
Yeah. So
I mean, I like that, Joetta, you had the hundred and the eighty, right?
Yeah. That's how I, that's how I calculated it out. Yeah.
And I'm, I'm myself, I'm not a fan of the hundred percent.
Pardon me?
I said I'm not a fan of the hundred percent. If we were going to do a hundred percent, then I think we should do is like other counties do is over twenty years, you, you, you gain one percent each year until you reach that. Hundred percent. But we're not discussing that right now.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, Bernie, in the sense that, you know, if you don't have any skin in the game, you know, there's no, you know, benefit for you to really take part or participate or do your due diligence and so forth, but so where are you at on the eighty percent?
If, if someone wants to make a motion that
Well, we have a We have a motion.
Yeah, but if you want to amend that portion of it to eighty.
Well, you would have to amend it if that's what you want to do.
No, I think someone else can.
So Joetta, you're saying that
I would make that amendment if that's what it takes.
And I would accept it.
So what on that, then it would be eighty across the board or eighty-five across the board, or what would you want?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eighty.
So the single plan would be ninety, and then the other three tiers would be eighty percent.
Eighty.
Okay, eighty-twenty.
And I think that's a nice compromise. And then if there's no more discussion on that, I'd like to revisit the, you know, ARPA or COVID issue, and I've talked to several of you about this. And I've had conversation with, I'll say, many employees that, that and I know some commissioners had thought that, that ARPA amount should be twenty-five hundred. And I think everybody's kind of come to the agreement of fifteen hundred. Is that?
That was the motion.
That's the motion, but I don't know, is, are we all agreeing to that?
I think that is way, I think that with the insurance and what we're doing with the insurance and the five percent in the salary, I think that is high. I really, I mean, the fifteen hundred is high.
Okay, and my, and I don't, no argument.
Yep.
I'm just saying, with the understanding and that this is ARPA money and it's whatever you want to call it, it's free money. It's, personally, I agree, it's the worst financial tragedy this Washington DC sent down the road, but
Because it's not free money. I mean, it's money we have to pay back. It's still taxpayer money.
And, and I agree. I can't think of a better way to spend it because I, we're going to run out of ways to spend it.
I mean, to where, you know, I, I mean, I look and I know we've given some tax relief here.
Yep.
But I just think that, you know, everybody, everybody in this county, everybody has been suffering with inflation. And I just think that the fifteen hundred dollars is, I mean, we struggled to we struggled to come up with fifteen thousand dollars, and I know that they're not county employees anymore. But they're still doing the job in the county. I mean, I would go, I mean, if we want to do the ARPA, but I would definitely not, I'm not in favor of fifteen hundred.
Well, the motion is fifteen hundred, and my only other conversation on that is that I think that money needs to go out to the employees ASAP, not, I think, Neil, didn't you mention December first?
I just threw out December first because that's what the city's doing with theirs.
Well, when did we ever follow the city?
No, I'm just saying. I'm just versus
I mean, I would be, I mean
What I'm saying is, the employees, they've been, and we've all been suffering the effects of the recession for eight or nine months now with no end in sight. And so let's do something positive and get it out. It's a payroll push button.
Yeah, the, the, the December date isn't a, a sticking stone for me.
If I would ask you to amend that comment or your motion to
Can we do the insurance one first?
Pardon me?
Can we do the insurance amendment first?
Do you think you maybe, Neil, maybe I'm wrong in this, but maybe you want to rescind your previous motion and
No, he can re
And start over? Because there's a lot of amendments and I just don't know how.
Commissioner Arthaud just said she's concerned about fifteen hundred. And so if that's the case, I want to hear her argument. I, I'm, I want to be flexible in the whole package, and that's why if we do them individually, that's my concern. So I, if, I don't care when the, the money goes out, be honest with you. That's the least of my checklist.
So if it's If you're going to have a motion with a date on it, Mr. Messer, and you don't care, and it's not an issue.
I'm going to make a recommendation. Let's deal with the insurance.
Yes.
And then come back and you can make an amendment to the
Let's do it.
Okay.
So we have a motion and second on the ninety-eighty.
Right.
I think we're ready to vote.
Question? That, you're going to rescind?
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
So we can vote on the amendment right now.
And was there a second to the amendment?
Yes, Bernie did.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried on the insurance.
So if you want to throw out a date other than December first, I'm fine with that. I would accept.
Well, are you going to make that motion then to reflect, say?
I just think that on the ARPA
Sixth, by, by the October thirty-first date. Let's just use that.
I would like to see that, you know, I just guess I would like to see that. I mean, with the insurance and the five percent we are giving, which, I mean, there, it's deserving, you know, hopefully by next year will be more on a merit system. We are supposed to work on that by this year, but it mean, it just takes time. But I just think on the actual ARPA funding, I would agree with you, a thousand dollars. But I just think fifteen hundred is very high, especially with the fact that we increased insurance.
Make that motion to amend that. So we can vote on it, is where I'm at.
Okay, as chair, I will make the motion to amend the, from the fifteen hundred to a thousand dollars for the ARPA spending for the employees, for the COLA. Is there no second? Okay.
I will offer an emotion.
I would, then I will, the motion fails for a lack of second, so I need another motion.
And I'll make that motion to the ARPA inflation reimbursement to employees to be fifteen hundred payable to them October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
So we have
He's amending, he's amending my motion.
Okay.
Can I say something for discussion real quick?
It's not, we have to have a second first.
A second.
The, the only thing I ask is that you just align it maybe with the last pay period in October because we don't want to do a separate payroll, if that's okay.
And that's perfectly
Is that fine? Okay.
Okay, we'll do roll call vote. Commissioner Messer.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes no. Motion carried.
So now we have the motioned, the amended motion to vote on, which is the entire motion.
Wait.
Which would be five percent plus fifteen hundred by the end of the October payroll and ninety percent employee and eighty percent on the other three policies. So that's your amended motion on the table right now. You can vote or discuss.
Is that been seconded, Neil?
No, we don't need one. It's, it's, it's So we can vote. It's either discussion or vote.
There was a motion out there.
Way earlier, now we amended it all.
We've amended that motion.
So now
Okay.
We're going back to vote on the amended motion.
So then who seconded that motion?
I did.
Okay, all in favor? Or I guess I'll do roll call. Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioners Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioners Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes no. Motion carried.
Are we done?
I just hope that every taxpayer in Stark County also would be able to get a fifteen hundred dollar break on their property taxes because of inflation. That's all I have to say.
Well, I think we've done our job in protecting the taxpayer. We're the only political subdivision in the county that hasn't protected them over the past four years. So that's a discussion I'm, I'll gladly have with, I'm in the property business, so I'm, I'm happy we're willing to do it, so. Okay, the last one that
Can I run the meeting?
You made a comment. I can, I'm, I'm elected as commissioner as well.
Yes, I was just saying you were going, moving on.
Run the meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
I am running the meeting.
Moving on, we, we, you asked us to have the department
Excuse me, Commissioner Zander. We got two meetings left. I just want to run at his chair, and I want you to be respectful. And you can slap your pen and wait to say something. Don't bother me. I know there was, it was never went, brought up on the, the county commissioners. There was talk back and forth if we were going to take the raise or not.
Yep, I have that written down as well.
So as the county commissioners, I know Mr. Zander had brought it up, Commissioner Zander brought it up at one time. Does anybody have the comments if the commissioners are taking the raise?
If I have the opportunity, I'm going to take my raise.
Our proposed budget says zero, so I think that's what we were going with, but
Oh, well, actually, it's one of those two. Is that, did we adopt the one fifty-seven fifty-seven, Karen?
That's what I put on the estimated tax statements, and that's what was proposed in the first budget meeting.
I'm willing to live with that. So it's already been adopted.
So we're getting zero?
That's what we said earlier in
That's what I was informed of to do on the
There was an emotion made on it.
I don't think there was, but whatever.
Not, not a full motion, no. Nope, this is just what was put on the estimated tax statements. If you want to change it, you are welcome to change it.
I mean, I just brought it up because I know it was brought up and it's up to this commission if they want to change it, or, or I mean, if they want to, it's totally up to this commission.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that the governing board budget be established at one fifty-seven fifty-seven point twenty, which includes a zero percent increase for the governing board.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Marsh.
Nay.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried. What else needs to be done on here?
You still have your salary.
Department head.
Yeah, if you're moving to the department heads to salary or not, but I think that motion has already been made in previous meetings. Am I wrong?
No, we kind of, I don't know, there's a couple of department heads here. I would, I would have rocked, walked out of that room that we were going to have some additional discussion whether we were going to do I would, I would have rocked, walked out of that room that we were going to have some additional discussion whether we were going to do anything with overtime for some of those other department heads.
Yes, that would be the last thing.
I just think that they're, go ahead, sorry.
So, and, but no, go ahead, I'm, I'm just saying that based on discussions, I've tried to have discuss, there's eight department heads that extracted or were, uh, paid overtime in the last three years. And I think I've talked to at least six or seven of them. And the bigger concern was not so much that they weren't going to get overtime. I, I don't want to use, but a major concern was not the overtime as much as the ability to flex those hours. They were, uh, the, the, the feedback was if you put in overtime and that it had to be, uh, flexed or paid for within the next payroll period. And my, I want to take a, a look at overtime with the department heads. What I do want is, I wanted to make a motion, department heads at their salary, they're, they're exempt from overtime and they are, they're given unlimited time to do their, their, their flex because everybody is different. The Fair, Fair, um, Lisa with Fair Board, all her time is in the midsummer. She has a slow time in December, January, winter, so she could flex there. Some other ones, you know, um, that we go through, you know, they have one or two busy days, they may want to use it the following week. They're the department head, they're our leaders and so, um, that's, that's where I'm at, so.
So then on that, who's like, you know, like with the overtime and stuff that, you know, that the portfolio holder, holders were supposed to watch that?
Yes.
So then on the flex time, on the days that they're not there, are they going to report that to their portfolio holders or how?
This was my recommendation, so it's documented, is that, uh, if one of my department heads has overtime, quick email, I did this, da, 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 uh, and I, uh, you know, whatever, and then send another memo at some point. Could include, um, the auditor as well, but include another memo, I'm going to flex this Friday or this Thursday. Uh, use that flex time that I built up on January first or whatever it is.
One, one thing with the overtime that I, I guess I'm still a little confused on, I know that I am salaried and I know that our state's attorneys are salaried. We don't necessarily track, um, if we work overtime or not, it's just.
This is different.
So, so you're saying that you want everybody to track?
No, you're an elected official, you're not a department head. So Amanda, yourself, the sheriff, uh, are the elected officials.
Okay, take.
All we control there is your budget.
Take, okay, take me out of the equation, let's say other state's attorneys, Jim, do you track how much overtime you have every week? No.
But he's an employee. Let's talk about the department heads, uh, Lisa, we got several in the room, Lisa, Mike, Joetta, Natalie. So if they have what I envision, I'm open on this, but I'm just saying, I, I want to control what we're doing here is if they do have overtime, they send a memo to their, uh, portfolio holders that said, hey, Mike, I'll give Mike an example. I had to come in Sunday afternoon, we had eight inches of snow, I came in Sunday afternoon to move all the snow at the county facilities, uh, and, and put eight hours in, okay? I intend to flex that time into next Thursday. It's documented, uh, that way there's, there's some kind of monitoring of control, uh, so that you eliminate any, uh, and I'll go back, the information I was, uh, able to garner from previous commissioners, the reason department heads went from exempt to, uh, non-exempt was they felt there was some abuse of the overtime, okay? And so I think if you monitor it and you control it and you document it, uh, it's not overtime per se. It just gives you the, uh, the ability to, to flex that time.
So Jim, you don't check your overtime, but are you salary then or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Yes. So I just, with these employees going to, and I'm, like I said, I don't want to take much longer, this meeting's long enough. But with this, I mean, some of them are actually losing some money with their overtime being taken away.
Well, overtime is not guaranteed.
Right.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. Okay.
And you know what? I mean, we all looked at the budget, we'd all decided on the salary. And in a year from now, if, if we look at what they flexed and what they've used, at that point, we can make a decision, well, you know what? You know, we probably under.
Okay.
Salary and, uh.
So do we need a motion on the amount of time for flex time? Because I think that was very important to some department heads, you know, because it's like they can't use it in a week's time. And I know that, that'll have to be a policy change, but I think that they should have.
I would gladly make, and I think I just did, made the motion.
Yep.
That they're exempt, no overtime and their extra hours can be flexed with unlimited, uh, time rather than that week or next period.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I think Bernie seconded.
You seconded, okay, um, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Um, delinquent property, property taxes.
We're onto delinquent property sale.
Or sale pricing. I need to keep my glasses back on.
Your delinquent property sale pricing sheets are the longer ones that were provided. This is the time to establish what the commission would like as the sale price for these properties.
Bernie, I need to step off to call the school, if you just want to run for a second, run it for a second.
Sure thing. Okay, continue what you said, is there any recommended?
So what we have on here is we have, um, the delinquent tax amounts through eleven fifteen twenty twenty two. That's on your sheet that has the pictures. Um, that's how much taxes is actually owed in delinquent taxes. Um, if we price those properties at a, this is a minimum sales value prices or twenty twenty two true and full value, if we went with that instead, that's that column right there. So, um, for example, the first parcel, Creekside, um, your delinquent taxes owed are sixty six seventy. The minimum sales price that you'd be going with is three hundred, but the commission is allowed to price, as long as it's more than that sixty six seventy amount, you are allowed to price anywhere in there. Um, that doesn't make a difference. Those are just, you know, two options of where you'd be looking at. On the top, on the single sheet that you have, the single sheet that you have has the properties that we currently have. We have our very exciting draining ditches that nobody will ever buy. And then, um, we have three empty lots. Um, we have our previous sale price of these and you can see the different marks in that column. We have fifteen thousand, ten dollars, ten dollars, nobody wanted them at ten dollars for the draining ditches. And then we have fifty two thousand each for the two lots and then fifty five, six hundred. And those were all previous sale prices that we set last year. Um, all the way to the right is what is owed in delinquent taxes currently through eleven fifteen twenty twenty two. Um, with that being said, we are, the commission is allowed to adjust these previous sales prices to new sales prices as they did not sell in the last year. So now's your chance to adjust those and set the other ones.
So when, how long do we leave these on the delinquent tax list for people to buy before we put them on a bid and just let people bid on them and buy them? Can't do that.
Can't do that.
Okay.
So they just hang out until somebody decides to buy them every year, they just.
We have the ability to adjust the price mid-year, but we have to go through the same notification problem as we process that we do today.
But you know what, if something sits out there forever and we, we're doing weed work and keeping it mode and everything, it's costing us more money than if we just put it on a bid and got rid of it.
So currently how, um.
I think that's against, I mean, that'd be the right way to go about it, but I think that's against century code.
Yeah, well, I didn't know, so I asked.
Currently how, um, it stands with the, the new legislation that passed and went through is that anything that is over, the tax is due, um, besides a small fee, so probably around fifty dollars, I think is what it is. Um, or a price if we had to tear something down, um, it all has to be sent back to the state. Um, the county does not make any profit on any of the, the sales of these, these properties. Um, so I do, I have had some people that have expressed interest in some of the empty lots. And so, you know, if the commission is willing to lower those prices at all, that'd be great. Um, but nothing can go below what the taxes are owed.
So why don't we just list them all with taxes, because we don't get to keep any of the extra money anyway.
Yeah, well.
I would love that, Bernie.
So, just a point of clarification, if the previous property owner, uh, if the sales proceeds is in excess of the delinquent taxes plus expenses, if the previous property owner makes a claim, he or she gets the excess funds. And so here's another bill that I'm working on, it was House Bill eleven ninety nine. Uh, uh, it's an absolute tragedy to the tax, taxpaying citizens of, of the, the county that people who don't pay the tax have better, more benefit than the people who do pay their taxes.
Right.
And so what I would ask, I, I, I would like to do this in two fashions. Number one, I would just say on the new delinquent tax properties, let's accept the, uh, recommendation of the tax director, tax in full and establish those prices as, um, uh, our ask. So that would be the three hundred, three hundred, twenty seven thousand, seventy seven hundred, fifteen, five and the twenty six hundred. And then we can make an adjustment somewhere down the road if we feel we aren't, um, competitive in the market. The, was that a motion or a just recommendation?
I think a motion.
Okay, I'll, let's do that and then I'll discuss the other ones.
I'll second that.
Kate, there's a motion and a second that we leave all of these at the minimum sale prices or the two thousand twenty two true and val, true and full value. Motion made by Neil, seconded by Dean.
Can I ask a question? Is that okay?
Yes.
So I see that your motion is to accept those minimum sale prices, true and full value, but the commission could go with an amount between the delinquent taxes owed and the minimum sales prices. I'm just wondering how many properties and for how long the commission would like to sit on some of these properties? Because as we didn't sell any of our, we're, we're, we're kind of carrying them over year to year.
Okay, I want to, I want, and that's part of the next conversation, I want to fix the, uh, the, the law as it's currently written so that it reflects, uh, local, um, local governmental entities and I'll explain, get into that, but.
Okay, roll call.
I don't have any, I want, I want these properties back on the ta, tax rolls, absolutely. We've, we've actually knocked that list down a little bit over the last couple of years, so it's not that we're just holding them over forever and ever, so. Um, anyway, done, shut up.
Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Okay, so there was House Bill eleven ninety nine last session. So for the previous hundred years in North Dakota, if a county got a piece of property packed and had a hundred dollars in taxes and the true and vol, full value would be two hundred, for example, the county was allowed to take those excess funds, put in their general fund, uh, to do those kind of things. Last session, there was a bill introduced and it was primarily, it was masked, um, in that they tried to relate property taxes to a mortgage on a piece of property. So that if you had a two hundred thousand dollar piece of property, you put a hundred thousand dollar mortgage on it, the bank forecloses under, under current law, under mortgage law, that, that hundred thousand dollars, if sold or redeemed from the sheriff's sale through redemption, those funds go back to the property owner. So they drug county-owned properties into that equation, basically saying that if we had three years of taxes, a thousand bucks, the value, the, not, the tax director puts two thousand on them and we get two thousand dollars, if the previous owner would make the claim, we'd have to give that thousand dollars back to the previous owner, even though he or she was three years a delinquent, which is a, a absolute.
Yes.
Screwing of the taxpayer. And a classic example is someone comes in, he owns four lots, loses all four lots, the, uh, county loses money on three of them. Uh, that's the county's liability, if the fourth one comes in and the, the proceeds, uh, exceed the tax thing, the previous property owner is the one who benefits, yet he screwed or didn't pay taxes and was delinquent on the other three. So again, we have legislation drafted, it's, uh, ready to roll that we're going to correct this and so I would hope that we can wait on at least a couple here that there's potential of equity in, until that becomes law in August first, so.
Kate?
Great.
So then we have the del, delinquent taxes included estimated for two thousand twenty two taxes and specials?
I would move that we, uh, keep our previous, uh, ask sales price, um, as listed in column one, two, three, four, five. The fifteen thousand, the ten dollars, the ten dollars, the fifty two, fifty two and fifty two, fifty five, excuse me.
Fifty five, six?
Fifty five, six, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion that we keep the previous sale prices on the one, two, three, four, five, on the six, um, Stark County residents. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, approved and seconded, roll call vote, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Marsh. Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Uh, two, uh, twenty twenty two general election inspectors approval.
Okay, so provided to you as a commission is our list of our twenty twenty two general election inspectors. Um, on that list I have Ed Sticka, Renee Sticka, Hillary Berg, Kareen Kruj, Sue Hoff, Pam Winhold, Nicole Roberts, they are for absentee, Wanda Kick and Joan Murphy. And I'm looking for the commission to approve my list of inspectors for the general election.
I'll make that motion.
Kate, do I have a second?
I think Ken did.
Second.
Okay, um, it's a motion and a second, commis, we'll do roll call vote, Commissioner, ooh, uh, Messer.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Local event permits for approval.
Okay, so I have three permits for approval with the commission today. We have had quite a fun time with our permitting process for events, but these three are ready to go. Um, I have Saint Pius Varon and that, their event is October fourteenth. I have Saint Elizabeth Catholic Church, their event is December fourth. And I have, um, Saint Stefan Church and their event is November sixth. And these are all raffles and then, um, Saint Stefan's Church is also approved for bingo and a sports pool.
I make a motion to reapprove all three permit requests.
Kate, I have a motion to approve all three. Kate, who did that?
Ken.
Ken.
Okay, um, roll, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then we have the Nexus Planning and Consulting Grant Contract.
I'll have Shawna come up.
I can see Daniel waiting back there patiently.
For Daniel.
Shawna Davenport, Emergency Services, um, so as you all know, we formed a small cities grant committee and we spoke to several different people and we have kind of narrowed down our search to Daniel Schwartz with Nexus Planning and I'll just have him talk to you a little bit about what he's able to provide for us.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Like, uh, Neil and Shawna, I probably told you, so, uh, my expertise is in emergency management, particularly in grants that are under the FEMA umbrella. I've had a lot of success with those since twenty seventeen when I first started. Um, when they approached me and asked about some of the projects they need done in the cities and the county, upon looking at that list, a lot of those products can fall under the FEMA umbrella. And so, um, if the contract that I provided to the county is signed, it would be something that I would pursue, uh, for, on behalf of the county and the cities, at an at-risk, um, type of setting, so where, um, if I apply for the grant, I don't get paid unless the grant is approved because my fee for services of management and development of the application would be, uh, would be considered grant administration and that's a reimbursable expense.
Okay.
So if it's, um, something they want to pursue today, it wouldn't cost anybody any. So if it's something they want to pursue today, it wouldn't cost anybody anything until we actually get the grants awarded and coming into the-
So like infrastructure and like sewer system and all that, you'll be able to somehow tie that in or also work with those?
Correct, yeah, it'd be infrastructure, anything from wastewater, potable water, drinking water, lift stations, generators for, you know, buildings, infrastructure, things like that, so.
Okay.
He brings a lot to the table, you can see that in his information he provided, he's been very successful in doing this.
Thank you.
We're gonna recommend, because there is, and Daniel, you could kind of answer the question, I know there's some timing on, we gotta get some stuff going for these small communities, and so the only, so we'd like to, the grant committee would make a recommendation that we authorize a contract with Daniel. My only question is an interpretation one, where if a grant is awarded and his fee is in the grant, it does not cost us any money, but is that still subject to any of the RFP requirements that the state would put down on us? Okay, so that would be the only question we would have.
The only thing where RFP that I understand comes into play, if you want to hire me just as your grant writer-
Okay.
There isn't an RFP or any kind of search, you needed your due diligence there, the procurement comes into play, if the grant is approved, then you would go out for three bid, anything over a hundred thousand dollars, you'd follow that that procurement process for pretty of the monies that are awarded.
Okay, so we'll just have the, because that, do you have a contract that you use to, for us to allow the chairman to sign, or is that something we should generate?
Did I already send one over?
I can check my email again, but I think maybe you sent one over.
There is a templated contract, it's basically called a professional services agreement, so it just, it gives me the permission to start applying for and working on your behalf, with the understanding that nothing, no money is due to me for my services until a grant is awarded.
And then so I can like give your card out to some of the other small cities so they could contact you also?
Yes, yes, if we were to move forward, what I'd like to do is call a workshop or just a get together with all of our mayors, auditors of the small cities, any of our stakeholders, our leadership teams are gonna be the ones that would be a direct report, and just kind of say, here's, here's what we want to do, here are the timelines, here's what I need from you, it's kind of a punch list of items I need from them in order to get to the application to middle point.
Okay.
So some of the things that we really liked with Daniel is that he did say, he does have on his history, is that he has already received funding for lift stations, which was huge, because I know that's one of our big things on our list, and also, some of the small cities, they have engineering needs that need to be met, and he has also received funding to do the engineering part and then the grant part, so a grant for the engineering to start with.
Fiscally, sorry to interrupt you, Karen.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so in fiscal year nineteen, FEMA realized that one of the hurdles for smaller communities was the engineering, so they know that their water system is bad, but they don't know exactly the scope. So FEMA started awarding what was called back then advanced assistance, it's now called project scoping, and basically they say is you, if you have a, you know, your wastewater system, for instance, that it needs to be retrofitted, you know that, but you don't know the exact scope, they will give you a grant of project scoping for engineering, to hire engineering to get all that project scope done, to then be able to apply for the full grant funding of the of the entire project. So that was a huge hurdle up until twenty nineteen, now that's not some more, now that's not the case anymore.
Great, great.
And we discussed if the commission agrees to sign off on the contract with Daniel Schwartz, then I will send out an email to the auditors and get a meeting set up with the mayors and the small city auditors, and even Dickinson actually would like to be involved too.
Yeah, I just I just got an email this morning from Linda.
Yep, Linda Carlson, perfect, so.
I would move that we authorize the chairman to sign the contract with Nexus Planning Consulting for the for the grant applications that we are trying to pursue, upon review of the state's attorney.
Ken seconded it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, welcome.
Thanks. Yep, he'll do a good job.
Is there anything else? Any input from the public?
Carl, I'd like to make one comment, I'm kind of glad you put this guy on board here, because after our county meetings this week, there's all kinds of infrastructure funding coming and everything requires a grant written for it, so-
Thank you.
Good job of getting him hired.
Thank you.
I think he'll be very busy.
I think I think mom's giving the apartment test.
Yeah. We heard he's covered.
I was wondering why she was sitting back there.
Anything else? If so, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.